Thank you.
Our next speaker is Maria Caputi. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Hi. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I know it's been a long day and a challenging year, and I appreciate all that you've done for our kids and our community. Overall, I've been happy with how the school board, Dr. Spence, and the teachers have handled things during this pandemic. I feel that they have been keeping the health and safety of our kids and community as the guiding principle when making decisions. Dr. Spence's fireside chats have also helped communicate what is going on in our schools in a personal way. We hope our kids learn how to communicate, make good decisions, continue to learn new things, and rely on experts when needed. This behavior continues to be modeled by the Virginia Beach school system. I have three teenage children. My oldest graduated in 2020. The other two are currently attending two different schools in the Virginia Beach system. We chose option two over the summer to return to school when it was safe to do so because I felt the plan following the data was a good compromise with keeping the kids and teachers safe and giving them a more normal school experience. My youngest is a freshman and had a good experience when she returned to in-person school early this fall. Unfortunately, this experience was not universal. I heard there was a rumble starting to, starting that disregard all that was learned over the summer by countless meetings with experts and changing the parameters that will guide the return to school. Yes, everyone would love to have things back to normal, but nothing about this pandemic is normal or even known. We have to rely on medical knowledge and scientific. Even the CDC recommends looking at community data to decide when to safely open schools. It is a blessing that we have not had any major issues at our school, but it is simply irresponsible to not consider the data when deciding to bring the kids back to school. Being one of the largest school systems in Virginia, we have been ahead of the curve and continue to chart the course by being a model in our state and in the country. Online school is not ideal. I realize that and appreciate that. Not everyone has had a great experience with it, but the emotional turmoil created from the constant threat of changing the rules and parameters of sending the kids back to school is unnecessary stress, both for the kids and the parents and the teachers. Sending the kids and teachers back to school during a time when our infection numbers are increasing is just irresponsible. This pandemic is something the world has never experienced before. Probably the closest event in history that affected so many people was World War II. Education was affected. Life was affected. People rose to the challenge and gave up individual freedoms for the common good. The lasting effect was the community that survived. No one talks about the issue of miseducation. Why is our society so unwilling to forego immediate gratification, the long-term benefit of our community? Yes, our kids' short-term education will suffer, but their emotional health is in our hands. How can we talk, how we talk about and handle the stress of living in a pandemic will have a more lasting effect on the children today than their missed school work. Kids are resilient. They'll be able to overcome issues with their education, but trying to recover from a lost loved one or permanent disability will be much more challenging. Please keep our kids, teachers, and community, community safely, safety in mind as you decide when to open the schools. And if you decide to change the rules, please also allow both teachers and parents the opportunity to change their decision to return to school. Thank you for this time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kathleen Slendy. Please unmute.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you. My name is Kathleen Slendy, and I'm a teacher and president of the VA. I'm speaking on the action of changing the metrics and bringing back both special education teachers and students and option-one students while the metrics are in red. No one in education will deny that special education students have special needs. They deserve and receive an education specifically designed for them individually by dedicated teachers who have the educational knowledge and experience that make them qualified to do this. They are helped in the delivery of this by their teacher assistants and specialists, so services are provided to those students. But the current situation, in this current situation, how can we, and how should we deliver education services while still keeping our teaching community safe for all who are engaged in it is an extreme challenge. Teaching in the special education classroom is often a high-risk situation in the very best of times. Teachers and teacher assistants, and sometimes principals, assistant principals, and security assistants can find themselves unintentionally injured by students who present behaviors that they are unable to control. Our special education teachers deal with this day in and day out with professionalism, patience, and tremendous amounts of care. And this plan, your change, repays them by changing the expectations set in the 2020 Fall Plan. The plan clearly stated that if any of the metrics were red, there would be no face-to-face teaching. And now you are proposing that they be excluded from the protection that all other school personnel will have by teaching virtually because of their challenging teaching placement. There were some comments that were shared, here are some comments that were shared with me. As a parent of a child with special abilities, I experienced the hardships of virtual learning and realized it is not the same as face-to-face learning. However, I'm also tasked with the decision of doing what is best for the health of my child, and sending him back is not in the interest of his health. Why would sending any child or teacher, regardless of their abilities, back to school when positive COVID-19 cases are on the rise? How can that be in their best interest? The virus does not discriminate. It affects everyone differently. Sending children and teachers back to school when exposure and transmission can happen anywhere is very risky. Please wait on sending our children and teachers back. And another person shared this one. Although children may be less likely to get sick from COVID-19, they do live with the parents and other family members who spend their days interacting with others in public. This makes them transmitters of the disease as they bring to the school everyone that members of their family have come in contact with. Just thinking about the children is flawed. We need to treat our educators educators as indispensable, which they are in spite of any public pressure. I understand that this is not a decision that you make lightly. I have heard the same information in the news about the importance of getting students back to school. Each individual that advocated tonight that students return to school and that teachers be there in person to teach them is adamant that this is the right thing to do. But what if they had to do it? I don't hear any of those individuals saying that if this were their job, they would go right back to it and spend those hours in the school building with students who struggle with masks and social distancing, or that they would be willing to do so without a second thought. They cannot say it because only educators understand exactly what it means to be there, how challenging it is, and only educators have done their very best to serve our children during this time despite the challenges it presents. And even now, nine months into this, educators are still not invited to be part of the discussion or the planning. Please consider that those who do the work really do know what we are talking about. And when it is safe, every one of us will be thrilled to return to the classroom. You chose a plan, and teachers have worked to the very best of their ability and in their individual circumstances. Protect our health by following the plan you chose. Everyone, teaching and learning virtually when any of the metrics are in red. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, that was our last speaker for tonight.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, Consent Agenda, Agenda Item 10. The following items are presented as part of tonight's consent agenda. A, textbook adoptions. One, trigonometry. Two, discrete math. Three, computer programming. Four, probability and statistics. Also, B, Policy Review Committee recommendations. One, Policy 2-1, 2-1, Management Plans, Goals and Objectives. Policy 2-2, Definition Administrator. Policy 2-3, Administration/Consultant. Policy 2-13, Administration/Job Consultants. Policy 3-15, Local Funds. And Policy 3-19, Certain Special Revenue Funds. And we also have 10C, Religious Exemption. Any modifications to this consent agenda? Hearing none. A motion to accept. Mrs. Riggs and a second, Mrs. Melnick. Please show your affirmation with a raised hand, please.
Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Action Agenda, 11A, Personnel Report Administrative Appointments. Motion to approve. And second, Mrs. Melnick and a second, Mrs. Anderson. Discussion. Okay, please show your affirmation with a raised hand.
Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Dr. Spence, I believe there's some appointments to share?
Yes, ma'am. Just one this evening, and it's one that we're excited about. I would like to recognize tonight Paula Johnson, Dr. Paula Johnson. She has served with distinction in Virginia Beach as a teacher, began her career at Ocean Lakes Elementary School. She's taught at Salem Middle, Larkspur Middle, Cox High School, and Landstown High School, where she also served as an assistant principal. Most recently, she's been serving as the principal at Bayside Middle School. And I'm very pleased this evening that you've accepted our recommendation for her to serve as the next principal of Landstown High School. Congratulations to Dr. Johnson. And as with other appointments, we will find a way to recognize her formally in front of the board at a future meeting. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And congratulations again to Dr. Johnson. Okay, Action Item B, School Board Legislative Agenda for 2021 General Assembly Session. We'll first entertain a motion before discussion. Motion to approve. Mrs. Holtz, a second. Mrs. Melnick. All right, discussion. Okay. Mrs. and Mrs. Weems?
Are we going to bring Mr. Andrews? I'd like to ask Mr. Andrews some questions.
Welcome, sir.
You've been waiting out there a long time. I didn't think it was fair just to send you home without some questions. Joel and I actually had discussions this afternoon, and I just wanted you to share kind of some things that I had discussed with you concerning the ADM and the funding. And Kim, can you read that? Or Joel, can you read that, that part? Just so that folks will. Basically, it's asking for school systems to be held harmless during this pandemic, you know, with kids leaving and coming back to school.
Yes, but you know they're already doing that. That's already given.
That's what I wanted him to comment on. So I want you to comment on how, we've already done this, and what exactly does this piece of legislation do as far as adding to this? And where is the money coming from, if you would just comment on that?
So, do you want me to read this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Or some lawsuit, or whatever.
Schools are required each year to report their average daily membership, ADM, as of September 30th, to the Virginia Department of Education. This data is then used to determine direct aid payments to school divisions beginning in January of the following year. VBCPS is currently anticipating potential significant fluctuations in enrollment between September 30th ADM calculation and the March 31st ADM calculation. During the 2020 Special Session, the General Assembly adopted language that delays the reductions to state payments resulting from reduced ADM projections until after the March 31st ADM is calculated. During the 2021 General Assembly Session, VBCPS requests that the General Assembly hold school divisions fully harmless from a drop in ADM for the 2021 school year.
Thank you, Chairwoman Weems. Just a little bit of background on this, too. I would say this is, in some ways, not something new for the General Assembly. The ADM Hold Harmless is actually something that they've done, which, when we were talking, I forgot about this. They've done this in particularly southwest Virginia, where you see drops in student populations, where they sort of help school divisions from having a significant gap in school funding because their student enrollment might drop over a year or two years and things like that. So it's not entirely new territory. From that perspective, obviously, with COVID and everything else going on in the world, this is new territory for everyone. And what we are asking for is that the ADM projections that were put out there and that the, the actual budget, the Virginia budget, was built on, that we maintain those projections over the course of the year as opposed to updates on September 30th and March 31st. Normally, the updates are sort of routine, and we might see some ups and downs on those based upon real numbers, but we don't have those significant either increases or decreases or whatever we're going to experience this year. And so what our language is asking for is that instead of just keeping that Hold Harmless through March 31st, we maintain that through the whole year. So from a state's perspective, it doesn't really impact the budget. There is a, I'd say there are actually some school divisions whose ADM oddly enough has increased. And so we want to make sure that those school divisions, you know, receive those dollars for where they know their increases. But for everyone else, what we're asking for is just to sort of level that out over the course of the year. Don't make any adjustments based upon what the original projections were back when they built the budget, and that we keep that over the year so we have a little bit of stability in our budget because there's just a lot of uncertainty that is happening right now.
Okay. And like you said, this was already extended through March 31st.
That is correct.
And you're just asking to extend it further, and it's money that's already there, and it's just to honor the projections that they've already done?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Spence?
And just in real dollars, if that didn't happen, we would lose about $9 million that we would have to account for this school year. So the idea is, don't pull money out of the school system's budget in the middle of the school year when they're operating with that budget. Because that would, and we're not alone, by the way.
Correct.
You're talking about $135 million worth of ADM that's lost this year because of COVID in public schools. And so that would have a significant impact across school divisions across the state.
Is this an item on a lot of school systems legislative agenda? I would think that it would be.
And VSBA and VAS.
Every single school division that I have talked to, this is probably their number-one priority.
Okay. Thank you.
So we are, certainly, there is a large coalition. When we worked on this issue back during the special session, just to get it through March 31st, there was a large coalition that we were a part of where we really pushed that through to try to get that Hold Harmless because certainly there, there was a lot of uncertainty then. There contends to be a lot of uncertainty. So there's, this is, this is a big focus, I think, of every single school division.
Okay. Well, thank you for clarifying that out with me this afternoon and tonight for some of my colleagues. Thank you.
I think the only last additional clarification that will be, this is something we will have to reckon with in the upcoming budget. Because we won't know whether or not they'll hold us harmless for a future year. And so we'll have to work on projections from this year. And that would include the loss of 3,000 students or thereabouts. So something for us to be thinking about with the PPMC conversations upcoming about the budget.
Owen, Mrs. Manning?
Yeah, I'm just looking at this document that was put in front of us is different than the document that we have on, in our packet online.
So the added language at the end for, are you talking about the charter schools?
Yeah. So on, on our agenda packet, it has information on charter schools, but in this, it does not. So what are we voting on?
So this is, this is what we're voting on. This was sent out earlier, too. That's not new either. That's in our, that's in our legislative packet every year. Our opposition to charter schools.
But what are we voting on right now? We're voting on this? Or are we voting on what was on our agenda packet?
So you're, you're.
So, Mrs. Melnick, I think what she's referring to is that in this document, that paragraph about charter schools that was in the agenda packet is not on here. Somebody didn't make it on here.
Oh, thank you, Mrs. Manning. Thank you.
She's pointing that out. So I think she just wanted clarification, if I'm not correct, about which one you're voting on.
I'm sorry. I thought it was printed in here. What was sent to you?
What's in our agenda packet?
The addition of the charter schools. Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Yeah. Thank you.
Is that it, folks? All right then. Yes, Mrs. Hughes?
Yeah, everything that is in this printed that we got tonight, I'm happy with. But like I said last year when we voted on this, I have a problem with the legislative agenda with regard to charter schools. There are areas that have failing school systems. And if they have failing school systems based on the policies of their school boards, it wouldn't make any sense for those same boards to be in charge of the charter schools. It kind of doesn't give students in that area any options for a better education. And I mean, I'm happy with everything in here except for that.
So while I respect that, we create a legislative agenda for Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and we do not have failing schools. And that is something that we have always been opposed to and will, and will continue to be opposed to. And so.
Except that when we petition the General Assembly, we're asking them to apply that across the state. By the same token, I would have a problem with another jurisdiction asking for something that could hurt Virginia Beach because it affects the whole state.
We're against monies being taken from our schools. We're opposed to charter schools. It's just what we do as a public school system, and it certainly is within your right to vote against Virginia Beach City Public Schools legislative agenda.
Well, just for clarity's sake, because I know our community is listening, if I might just add, this is not an item which opposes charter schools. We have charter schools in Virginia Beach. We actually have a really great charter school in Virginia Beach, Green Run Collegiate Charter. I think that the, just for clarity in the community, what the item is doing is it's suggesting that Virginia Beach City Public Schools would oppose taking away local authority to engage in that charter and grant that to a statewide charter board, which is something that's been discussed in the past in the General Assembly. I don't know where that is today, but in the past, that's come up with the idea being that the local school board is elected by local folks to understand the local context, and then I think to be able to make those decisions about whether or not charter schools are viable and needed in those communities, which obviously this school board decided was necessary, I think, back in around 2012, 2013. So I just wanted for the community to be clear about what we were talking about.
Mrs. Weems?
Can I just respond since that responded to my comment?
Sure.
And I'm not saying that Virginia Beach is a failing school system, and I'm impressed with Green Run Collegiate, and that does work here. I'm just saying that when we petition the state to do something, it could be damaging to someone else, just like I would be concerned about another jurisdiction petitioning for the state to do something that could damage us.
All right. No, she's, wait. Okay. Okay. Hearing no further discussion, we'll put this to a vote. So all in favor of the School Board Legislative Agenda for 2021, kindly raise your hand. All opposed?
Okay, Madam Chair, in favor, it was Ms. Owens, Ms. Felton, Ms. Riggs, Ms. Weems, Ms. Melnick, Ms. Chairwoman Rye, Mr. Edwards, Ms. Anderson, and Ms. Holtz. Those opposing were Ms. Hughes and Ms. Manning. So the vote was nine to two.
Thank you. Okay, Action Item C, Fall 2020 Plan. Mrs. Melnick?
At this time, I make a motion to have the superintendent make a presentation regarding the status of the Fall 2020 reopening plan and answer questions by school board members. School board members will be limited to questions. Subsidiary motions will be accepted after the presentation and questions are complete.
Second, Mrs. Anderson. Discussion. Mrs. Weems?
Something of this magnitude, I don't think we can limit school board members to two questions. Again, if we have, I have suggested, many of us have suggested during a pandemic, we may want to meet more than once every two weeks if we have 50 and 60 questions.
No, we'll qualify that with two questions at a time.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
That was, that's been requested by numerous members.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's fine. But we need to stay here as long as we have questions. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
So, yes, Mrs. Manning.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to clarify this. So your motion is just allowing the superintendent to provide a presentation?
And the follow, and the questions that we didn't have time for at the workshop.
Okay. I just don't understand why we needed a motion for that. It's on the agenda.
Well, but it's action, so it has to start with a motion.
Okay.
And this is to, yeah, for the, for the benefit of the public, the workshop time ran out, and so we, we're going to do an abbreviated presentation, allow for questions, and then allow for members to do as they see fit from there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So with that, a show of hands to approve?
Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. So we welcome, again, our Chief of Staff, Dr. Bergen, and we can all pull out our slide cheat sheet again.
Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the board, and Dr. Spence. For members of our community who are watching by remote, I'm Mark Bergen, Chief of Staff, and I will be providing an abbreviated version of the information that was shared earlier with the school board in workshop format, along with Dr. Robertson. I'll begin this presentation by reviewing the current health metrics for the eastern region, discussing the alignment of our plan with the VDOE and VDH guidelines. Brief information about our plans to provide a more dynamic web-based document to communicate decision points and timelines for the community. The return of designated students within special education to in-person instruction today. And then Dr. Robertson will conclude the presentation by sharing an abbreviated version of the updates on the planned reopening of safe learning centers, recent decisions about secondary athletics and activities, and our planning efforts for the second semester. Anyone in the community who would like a more fuller presentation is encouraged to go back and watch the school board workshop, which will be uploaded within a day or two. So this is the screenshot from the VDH website that shows the historical trend for percent positivity in the eastern region since the onset of the pandemic. And in particular, as indicated on the far right-hand side of the graph, please note that as of November 1st and continuing through today, the percent positivity in the eastern region has remained above 5% and currently stands at 7.3% for the eastern region. This is a summary of the seven-day rolling average for new cases of COVID in the eastern region since the onset. If you look to the far right-hand side, as of August 19, the number of cases has been above the threshold for the red zone and has climbed over the past two weeks to its current level of 428.7 cases per day on a seven-day rolling average. By way of reminder, and as previously and on several occasions shared with the board and the community, the adopted metrics of our local plan are in alignment with the guidance provided for school divisions by the VDOE and the VDH, and aligns with the health metrics and health and safety mitigation strategies published by the CDC, including the provision that in-person instruction should be limited to students with disabilities as deemed appropriate by parents and IEP teams when both metrics are in the red zone. As shared during the workshop earlier today, over the holiday break, Mary Shaw, our coordinator for Health Services, communicated with Dr. Lindsay, the Medical Director for the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health, during which time Dr. Lindsay shared the key points that are listed on the slide. I would just like to accentuate towards the bottom of the slide that Dr. Lindsay indicated her support for our current plan of providing virtual instruction, given the increasing community spread in the region. She is also supportive of our plan to provide in-person instruction for the selected small number of special education students. Now that we've opened schools and have a better understanding of how to logistically accomplish pivoting back and forth between in-person instruction and virtual instruction, we intend to be following a seven-day timeline rather than a 14-day wait period for any further shifts from all virtual back to in-person instruction. We believe the seven days will be sufficient for monitoring the stability of the metrics and communicating with families and staff. It should also be noted that both of our metrics are already based on a seven-day rolling average, so the addition of a seven-day wait period actually equates to a 14-day timeline for monitoring changes within the metrics. To strengthen our communications with the community, we'll be updating our website to provide a more dynamic and web-based document to communicate decision points and timelines that we will use to transition between virtual and in-person instruction, following the metrics in the adopted plan. And the complete Fall 2020 Plan will continue to be accessible on our website for easy reference. As shared by Dr. Rogers in the workshop earlier this afternoon, today we return to in-person instruction. Approximately 1,200 special education students from designated groups that are listed here on the slide. These students represent about half of the 2,300 students within these identified special programs, and collectively about 15% of all of our students with special education services. The classroom settings for these students have very, very low student-to-staff ratios, most serving fewer than 10 students, with a minimum of at least one teacher and one assistant, teacher assistant in the room. Also, by way of reminder, these same students were recommended for and participated in ESY or extended school year services this past summer, when the number of new cases for COVID-19 in the eastern region was even higher than it is at the current level. Lastly, the return of these designated groups of students with disabilities is in line with the recommendations from the VDOE. Lastly, the return of these designated groups of students with disabilities is in line with the recommendations from the VDOE and the VDH. I will now invite Dr. Robertson, Chief Schools Officer, at the podium to provide additional updates, including the resumption of safe learning centers and decisions about secondary athletics and activities and plans for the second semester.
Thank you, Dr. Bergen. So, good evening. Uh, my portion of the presentation will focus on the items listed here on the slide, and as you'll note, is an abbreviation of what I shared in today's workshop. I'm excited to share we were able to reopen Safe Learning Centers in fourteen of our elementary schools for our staff and families who were served in September, and thanks to a partnership with United Way, we opened at the Williams Farm Parks and Rec location for tri-campus families. Each location comes at no cost to participants, and the fourteen elementary school sites are staffed by division staff assistants, bus drivers, and other school personnel from all middle, elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools, who serve as classroom monitors. Each classroom has at least two adult monitors who enforce health and safety requirements, offer computer assistance, instructional support, and monitor student behavior to keep students focused on their virtual assignments. In addition, mental health and physical breaks are provided throughout the day. And again, stringent health and safety mitigations will be followed as they were in the past. And please note that the Safe Learning Centers will end when option one students return to school. Here's a list of the fourteen elementary school cluster sites that will serve staffed children from between four and seven schools at each site. The sites were determined based on staff and family needs as well as location. And by way of reminder, each of the fourteen sites will house only one or two classrooms, and each classroom is capped to twelve students for a six-to-one ratio between students and adult monitors. As shared with the school board last week, we have made the difficult decision to cancel Middle School Winter Season One, which includes boys and girls' basketball and academic challenge. Clubs and activities may compete, continue, albeit only in the virtual environment. Middle school coaches and the two affected activities will not be paid, but will be created with, will, will be credited with the longevity cred- credit that can result in additional pay after a certain number of years. As of today, all schools, coaches, families, and students have been notified of this decision. Equally difficult was our decision to cancel winter JV sports. We believe by reducing the number of teams, athletes, and contests, we will provide our varsity winter athletes, many of whom are seniors, with chances at earning, earning college scholarships, with the very best chance to have a season. In addition, we will not be allowing spectators in our events. However, we know how important it is to watch your child compete, so we'll be using a live streaming service for a minimal fee to be able to watch all of our games in real time. To prepare for our varsity athletes, the Office of Student Leadership, high school principals and student activities coordinators have been reviewing guidance from the Virginia Department of Health, Virginia High School League, and our Coordinator of Health Services to make revisions to the Return to Participation Plan. They include pushing back the start of basketball season from December first to January fourth, a reduction in the number of players on school teams, adjustments to practice schedules, additional cleaning and disinfecting between practices, establishment of locker room and equipment health protocols, transportation guidelines, health screening requirements before students and staff can enter the practice facility, and establishing threshold ba- thresholds based on the health metrics as to when to cancel or postpone gains. In short, we will make student and staff safety the top priority, and if things are not working as designed, changes will be made, up to and including cancelling the season. Like with middle school, clubs and activities may continue through a virtual option only. JV coaches will be given the chance to join the varsity staff and keep their coaching supplement. If they decline to join the varsity coaching staff, like with middle school coaches, they will not earn the stip- the supplement, but they will keep their years of service credit. Earlier this year, we shared that in December we would be sharing with our families, uh, our plans for term two or the second semester. We are recommending that all students continue in their current learning environment. We base this decision on our ability, to this point, to address individual family requests to change their learning environment based on new circumstances. In fact, we are asking that any parent who wishes to change their child's learning environment in the second term or second semester, to notify their principal in writing of this change on or before Friday, December eighteenth. This will allow school staff to review requested changes against seat availability and option one, and in some cases, option two, in January, when schools are finalizing student and teacher schedules for term two or again, the second semester, which begins on February second. In addition, we will continue to offer the Secondary Virtual Learning Center, and based on family requests and school needs, we may be expanding the number of courses and offerings in this setting. At the elementary school level, we will continue to utilize the same method of partnering schools together to serve those families who, whose needs cannot be met at the home school. And I am proud to share that both the elementary plan and the secondary VLC have been met with great favor by students, families, and staff. And finally, all students and families will be notified by Wednesday, January twenty-seventh, of their learning environment placement for term two or, of course, the second semester elementary school. And this time, we are available to answer questions.
Okay. Mrs. Anderson?
This is a special ed question. So, um, one of the things we heard tonight was that some special ed students who returned today, many of them do not wear masks, they have a mask waiver, in some cases, they pull their masks off. I feel like this really puts our staff in danger. Um, and, and so I just, I, I'd just like to have an idea of how many of our special ed students, and you may not know this off the top of your head, but you know, how many of them actually do come to school with a waiver and do not wear a mask at all? You know, and you know as well as I do, especially in the elementary level, just the normal elementary child does a lot of accidental spitting or, you know, coughing, whatever. But with the special ed students, it is a little bit more. You know, I just, I worry about the safety of our teachers, of course. It, but I also, I mean, I, I realize that those children need to be in school, but I, I just, I wonder if there's anything we can do to, uh, protect our teachers more by making sure that all of our teachers who are special ed teachers at least not only have masks, but a face shield? That may be helpful, and I just, I just feel like if we could do something like that, would you respond to that?
Sure, what I can respond to is that we do provide all of our teachers and staff with PPE, and they're certainly, to, certainly, um, able to bring additional, you know, they would like, but we certainly provide, uh, PPE for all of our staff. Regarding the number of students who have waivers, I'd have to get back with you and share that information with the entire, uh, Board, uh, because I just don't know that, uh, information right now at this point in time. And I know Ronnie is on the call and able to answer some questions as well. I'm sure, pretty sure that she doesn't have a hard, fast number. Of course, I could be wrong. Ronnie, do you have that number? So I'm not been speaking?
No, I do not have that number.
But we can.
I, I'd just like to be reassured that, that if any special ed teacher asks for a face shield to, to wear along with a mask, that they would be provided that, because I do think that that's very important for them, for their safety.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Is that it for now, Mrs. Anderson?
That is, thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Wayne's?
All right, um, I don't know if this is Doc- Dr. Spence or Ronnie. Um, I'm not sure who wants to take this one, but can you just clarify and let me preface this by saying, I am such an advocate for special education teachers and special education students. I've had a couple living under my own roof. Went back a few years ago and got my license, provisional license to teach special ed. I've taught special ed, so I understand a little about special education. So can you, though, clarify and help folks understand? Because I think that the email that Dr. Spence went out, sent out last week, um, upset some of our special education teachers. We've heard some, some things tonight about using our kids as guinea pigs. Um, we, i- in my opinion, from where I sit, we've always advocated as a school board and as staff to get resources to, to the most needy, and the special education population has challenges, and, and they really need to be face to face. So can you just clarify how the decision was made to, um, keep these kids in school? How and why? And perhaps repeat that this is the same group that went to school in the summer when the metrics were higher, just kind of, um, to, to ease everybody, because I, I, I hate that teachers got the perception that we didn't care about them or this group of children, when in fact, in my opinion, we care a whole, whole lot. And we want to make sure that we service these kids with, with the way that they best learn. So can somebody take that one?
I mean, I think, i- in brief, and I'm, I'm certain if Ronnie, uh, or Dr. Rogers would like to, would like to weigh in, but I, I think in brief, yes. I mean, obviously, it, it, we care about our teachers and we care about our students deeply, um, in both cases. And I think, you know, one, one thing that needs to be clarified is that this was not out of alignment with our plan. So we saw a lot of emails that said, you, you, you didn't tell us the truth. But it's clearly stated in the plan that if we're in red, um, and yellow, that there would be, um, a case for where special education students would come back. Um, be, and we put that in there intentionally because we did it in the summer, and it worked in the summer, and it was important in the summer, and because we know that there are a group of students in our school division who it is, for whom it is incredibly difficult to provide educational services in a virtual environment. And because we've gotten the guidance from the federal government, very clear guidance from the federal government, that our obligation to serve our students' needs with special education does not end because of the pandemic, and to follow their IEPs. And so we made the decision to, um, obviously, and when we hit red, to do what we said we were going to do, was just pull, pull back, hit the pause button, and then, um, to evaluate in our conversation that week, in fact, it was twenty-four hours later, to evaluate, okay, so what do we do with this group of students? And made the decision, I made the decision frankly, to bring those students back because I know it's the right thing to do for those students. And so, um, we know that it worked in the summer. We know with the mitigations that we had in place with that much smaller group of students and those much smaller classes, um, that we can make this work. And I, you know, I heard, heard a comment tonight about, well, I have thirteen students. Yes, but two physically face to face in that instance. And so we can, we have much smaller groups of students and we can, uh, distance now. That doesn't mean that there aren't challenges with these students, and we understand that. Um, those are all discussions that have to happen at the IEP team level. The IEP team and the, and that includes the parents, and that includes the teachers and the case managers, and, um, all the folks from OPEC um, have to have the conversation about can that child safely be in school? And that's a decision that the IEP team makes together. Um, and that's what's been happening in all of these instances. And so, I don't know, Ronnie, would you like to layer into that in any way?
I guess additionally, I would like to add that, again, these are students that require the most intensive supports. So we recognize that these students have multiple services, and that they require those additional adult supports to make progress on their goals and in the general curriculum. So, you know, it was, again, difficult decisions, but I do believe it's a decision that supports our students with the most significant needs, that need those supports face to face.
Thank you.
So worth reiterating that that is in line with the guidance that we do have from the Department of Health, Department of Education, the CDC.
Okay, thank you.
Even with highest risk community spread, those students should be in school.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you for clarifying. Okay, my question number two, um, for this round is, um, you know, we, we've listened to science back in March and April and, and ma- and through the summer. Now, we've got science telling us that things have changed, situations have changed. We've got Dr. Redford, Dr. Fauci, Dr. Atlas, American Academy of Pediatrics, um, saying that kids need to be back in school. So my question is, in the recent cases that have caused the spike, I guess this is you, Dr. Bergen, how many of these cases in Virginia Beach are directly linked to employees or students in our buildings?
How about that?
So I don't think that's a Dr. Bergen question. I think that would be, um, more of a question for the Department of Health. But wha- what I would, um, I would, I would say a couple of things. Uh, one, we know for a fact, we saw a, a, a pretty steep rise as the, as the community transmission was rising, right? So we saw those numbers coming up and, and, uh, a- as the community transmission numbers were coming up, and you heard somebody talk about what, what's been reported about Chesapeake in the last couple of days. Similarly, like a, a, a steep rise with community transmission. I want to just talk about your science comment for a second. I'm not sure that's clear. Um, and so I don't, I don't want to get into a tit for tat and a big debate about science. I'm just not sure it's as crystal clear as it's been made out to be tonight that because the CDC Director made a comment that the default position ought to be that kids are in school, and that that's what Dr. Fauci said, um, that that means the science is clear that kids should all be in school tomorrow.
Uh, he was just one of my sources. We, we heard from four or five doctors.
We have, absolutely.
I've got a whole email of doctors.
And I'll just, but if I could, I'll just, I'll just reiterate. I mean, if you go to the CDC's website today, right, like in its, in its, uh, updated format as of today, they're still pretty clear that community transmission is a critical component, right, in that, in, in terms of the science. So I, I want to get into a, a big debate, but I do think we have to be very careful to say there is no definitive science that tells us ki- it's okay for kids to be in school and they should all be in school tomorrow. Doesn't, it's, it's, there's not. You, there are um, studies you also heard about tonight, which say the opposite. And, and even on the CDC website, it says, I mean, I'll, I'll just share a couple of, of things that are currently on the website about, and it's like right, right now today about school reopening, right? Says, uh, everyone's goal is to prioritize reopening of schools as safely and quickly as possible, given the many known and established benefits of in-person learning. We all agree, right? And there isn't any agreement in the room, or disagreement in the room on that. Um, and then in order to enable and assist schools with their day-to-day operations, it's important to adopt and diligently implement actions to slow the spread inside the school and out in the community. Uh, vigilance, these actions will moderate the risk of in-school transmission, with risk being the lowest if community transmission is low. So that, that matters. There's a whole piece about the, about kids, and it, and it affirms much of what was shared about children, but it leaves out a few things. So like on the CDC site, it says, although the cumulative rate is low, one in three children hospitalized with COVID was admitted to an intensive care unit, so the risk is not negligible. Um, and then it, it goes on to talk about contextualization. It says, the comparatively low risk for hospitalization and death amongst children has to be contextualized to the risk posed to teachers, school administrators, and other staff in the school environment, and talks about that risk being expected to mirror that of other adults in the community. It does talk about, uh, um, uh, the best available evidence from other countries have reopened indicate that COVID nineteen poses low risk to school-aged children, but then qualifies that by saying at least in areas with low community transmission. And then that said, the body of evidence is growing that children of all ages are susceptible to the virus. So, I could, I, I'm, I'm just pointing it out to say, I don't think there's defined science that says it's safe. I think what we've consistently heard, um, is the community transmission matters. You have to pay attention to that. Um, that's what we built the plan on. And, um, I, I don't disagree. I, I hope and think at some point, we might get clearer guidance from the epidemiologists about school-based transmission and metrics that will allow us to sort of follow that. But we don't have that yet, and I don't want to be in a position of making that up. Uh, so I, I just, I think, I feel like it's really, I need to say all that, and it's not to be argumentative. It's just to say, I don't, I don't feel there's one hundred percent, like there isn't a hundred percent, it's absolutely safe for children to be in school. And even if it was, we, that's still, we have to contextualize that for our staff, right? Like, because there's still, um, you know, concern there. And so
Right.
where we can, you know, really limit right now in high, high-risk transmission, we can really limit who's in our schools, where we can shrink the bubble significantly, like we're talking about with special education. I think we can do that. I'd be concerned to say, like the science says, everybody can go back in higher, in a high transmission moment.
Okay, well, okay. First of all, I didn't say science would a hundred percent. We're, we're never going to get a hundred percent safety ever.
Arguing with you, yeah. I wasn't arguing with you, yeah.
Okay, okay. I, I just think that, that we know a lot more than we did in March when we, or, or, and even a few months ago. And, and out of 68,000 students and over 10,000 employees, I just wanted to know which, how, you know, a ballpark figure of how much is actually linked to school transmission. But I understand that we don't have that, I guess. Thank you. I'll save my others for later. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Hughes and then Ms. Owens.
I was kind of wondering if the safe learning centers are the, the actual rooms that are being used are more or less or about the same population-wise as a special education classroom. I, I find it unusual that people would fear opening up the school for special education students, but we would have employees and children of staff members in the classrooms at the safe learning centers still coming home to those same teachers. Are we not worried about them? It just seems like you would have to be in favor of both or against both. Because wouldn't they pose the same risk regardless of what you think that risk is?
So I, I think we have to monitor that. What, what we're, what we're told in our conversations is if, if we can significantly shrink the bubble. So yes, essentially about the same size classrooms. We talked about no more than 12 students in a, in a safe learning center classroom. And those can be bubbled out to only interacting with six peers and an adult. And, and then we talked similarly about 10 students in the special education classrooms with two adults. So similarly shrinking that bubble and then monitoring that. And obviously that's not the sizes and staff to student ratios that we could expect if we had other students back. So I think it's mostly about looking at and understanding what, what you're trying to accomplish and then trying to do that in a way that greatly shrinks the bubble and reduces risk to allow that risk to be acceptable, given the benefit, which for example, with the special education students, we know is, is absolutely critical. As Ronnie was talking about.
I believe it's absolutely critical too. I just don't see it as being more of a risk than the safe learning centers. But we have some that are opposed to sending our special education students back to school, but haven't voiced any opposition to the safe learning centers. That just struck me as odd and inconsistent.
Yeah, I can only speak from where the administration's coming from. We're recommending keeping special education students in the building the way they are today.
Is that it for now, Mrs. Hughes? Okay, Ms. Owens and then Mrs. Riggs.
Thank you. And I guess I'm going to use one of my two in this rotation just to kind of address, Ms. Hughes, about, for myself only, why I would have concern about the special education classrooms more so than the safe learning centers, even with the same risk in the community. It's pretty much the same reason why I'm okay sitting here in this room with adults masked, socially distanced, and I'm not worried that Ms. Manning is going to come over and try and sit on my lap. I'm not worried that someone's going to try and run out of the room and that I'm going to have to block them with my body. I think that that's a different risk level to our teachers and staff than a safe learning center where we don't have students who are going to have those behaviors. I think it is equally a, a high risk and I think that we are trying to work with the community and provide safe learning centers because we know that there are students who need a place to be and that we are, we are trying to work with that. But I, I don't think for me personally, that I can compare the two and, and say that they are the same and equal risk when we heard teachers say that the IEP is hand over hand, instruction touching. So that's my, my thought on why I'm more okay with one than the other. My second question is, last meeting, I was asking about if we could have totals for the students and staff who've tested positive for COVID. I know that Mary didn't have the, the numbers last time and she was going to look into them. Do we know if we, we have those numbers this time?
Ms. Shaw, are you on the call?
Um, yes, Dr. Robertson.
Did you hear a good question from Ms. Owens?
Um, I think she was asking about a total number of positive cases for student and staff in the school division or in a particular school.
For the division would be helpful. I know that we've had several speakers come and talk about the number that's on our dashboard. But we also know that that's not our total number for the division. So I was wondering if we could share and be aware of and be mindful of what the, the total numbers are as we're making our decisions.
Um, Ms. Riggs, um, the, the cases that are on the dashboard are the students or the staff or employees that are in our schools or our school buildings that are, that are at an exposure risk to others. There has been some cases of employees or stu-, or students that may be in, in a remote work or virtual learning. But I can, we do collect that information. I don't have it in front of me, but we do keep track of all that.
The reason that I was asking it is, well, because I want us to consider what the actual numbers are that we're looking at. But because the exposure rate, the 48 hours prior to the test being in the building is, you know, what we're looking at for contact tracing purposes. But we also know that the incubation period for COVID is more than 48 hours. So even if they're not going on the dashboard because they don't meet the contact tracing requirement, because it would be way too much for anybody to contact trace seven and 14 days prior to a test. And so the standard is the 48 hours. I, I think it's relevant and helpful to have the information of you're in the building 72 hours before you tested positive. You're in the building, you know, within that week. And if we have those numbers.
It's Ms. Owens, Ms. Shaw.
Yes, Riggs.
Ms. Shaw, it's Jessica Owens, you're speaking.
Oh, hi, Ms. Owens. I'm sorry, Ms. Owens. I, I'm seeing, I'm just seeing a, a PowerPoint. The 48 hours, that's CDC guidance and that is 48 hours prior to onset of symptoms until the person enters isolation. So that's not just a 48-hour period of in the building. We trace back to when the onset of symptoms occur. We go 48 hours prior to that per public health, when we make that decision for transmission risk dates. We work closely with the epidemiology, epidemiologists with the health department on these cases. We're reporting in detail the day we're working the cases within the 24-hour period. So the 48 hours is prior to the test date if they're asymptomatic and it's 48 hours prior to symptoms. So it's science-based. It does capture that 48 hours is a safety valve through public health prior to symptoms. Or if they're asymptomatic with the testing date. The 14-days incubation period is when somebody is in a quarantine. So if we know our, our employees or students have had a close contact and we do know, even if it's outside of our school buildings, when it's reported to us, if there's a family member at home, we keep them out of our buildings for 14 days as a protection through that whole incubation period. So our contact tracing is, is, we spend a lot of time on it. We worked all the way through the Thanksgiving break, our team. So I want you to know that we're working hard to do that right.
And does that mean I can get the numbers like an email or?
We'll send the board an update with those total numbers.
Thank you.
Okay, no, no problem.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Riggs.
Um, I just wanted to reply to, to Laura's question or concern or statement. I agree with what you actually said everything I needed to say, Jessica, except for one thing. And one of the things that, you know, we've been made aware of also with our special ed students is they are more vulnerable. They are, you know, they are more vulnerable than regular ed students. And because of that, I think we need to think about that as well. And they have more of a chance to be affected by this virus. So I wanted to add that to what you, you said as well. And our children that are in the virtual learning, the, is that what it's called? Virtual learning? Yeah.
Safe learning.
The Safe Learning Center. It's, it's a little bit different. You don't have the same type of students there that are more vulnerable to get it. So that's the difference I feel as well.
Okay, Mrs. Manning and then Mrs. Weems. Oh, Ms. Felton, is your hand up? Okay, then we'll put you, you haven't spoken yet, so.
Okay, thanks. I have several, but I'll start with my first two. So I was notified that the SAT for First Colonial High School for this upcoming Saturday has just recently been canceled. So far, the Bayside one hasn't been canceled. What are our plans to be able to provide SATs for our students?
So I was not aware of that. Each site operates independently, but our directive to the sites were that we could continue to offer the SATs. You have to submit your health plan to Jack Freeman and Mary Shaw to ensure that the spacing of the students and the health and safety mitigation plans are followed. So I'll follow up with First Colonial. We have approved no one canceling SAT tests.
If we could do that as soon as possible.
Sure.
We're getting some messages about that. And then the other question is probably for you too, Dr. Robertson. You said that there's been a decision, part of the getting our, our kids back to sports for varsity, there's going to be a reduction of players on sports teams.
Yes.
How much of a reduction?
So I believe boys and girls basketball teams are limited to 15. Gymnastics are 12. Wrestling is 24. Indoor track is 30. Diving is five.
So it doesn't sound like significant reduction.
Well, it's, a typical basketball team is going to carry 18, so we cut it to 15.
Okay.
Um, indoor track could have as many as 50. That's down to 30. Uh, wrestling could have as many as 30, 32. That's down to 24. So.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, okay, for now. Mrs. Felton and then Mrs. Weems.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Spence, in reference to special education and some of the things you made possible, that this is the same program or similar program that the ESY for special education that we are doing now, similar or close to it? So.
Almost exactly the same, yes.
Okay.
Almost exactly the same group.
Okay, so my question is from summer till now, there has been some significant changes in our mindset, our attitude and things that we're seeing. And we've been bothered by news, you name it. It's just coming in. And no doubt, the special education teachers, they have fears. And I believe in their fears. And I can't, I can't measure their fears to mine. All I can do is hear it. But that is being mandated federally for these high-risk, higher-risk students to be placed back into school. And Lord knows I am, I'm all about the care of special education students. I have had the opportunity to visit some of our schools that have these facilities that are attached to our schools and had a tour. And I commend those teachers and those assistants that were there doing the work and what they had to work with. But my question is, things are different. They're changing. That is federal mandate to go back. Are we doing anything extra for them, like extra cleaning, extra help, extra assistance that they have to be there? Those things that might commi-, mediate the stress of what they have to do. And I know that clean, cleaning and PPE is some of the things that are being asked to, to help facilitate the needs of this. So are we doing anything extra with this group of people when it comes to their situation, they have to be there mandated by federal law?
Yeah, and I want to, I'm going to let Ronnie talk a little bit about, I mean, again, every, the thing you have to continue to understand about special education students is every single student is on, is a case-by-case discussion. Right? In terms of what specific supports are provided to those students. From a mandated by federal law, I just want to be clear about that. The federal government has said we are, we are obligated to provide the same services to our students that are in their IEPs regardless of the pandemic. So what we do is work individually with each parent, each IEP team to figure out what that looks like in a pandemic. And what we know and what we understand and what I think is reflected in the guidance that we get is that there are a group of students, a significantly smaller group of students than the broader group of students that we serve in special education, but a group of students, and we delineated who they are, who really need that face-to-face instruction. And you also heard only about 50% of those students are coming in. So which means the IEP team and/or the parents decided, health reasons, other reasons, that's not going to happen. And, and we understand all of that. So, so then to the, are there, like extra cleaning? The cleaning is the cleaning. I want to keep making that clear. The cleaning is the cleaning in our buildings, right? So our cleaning protocols are for COVID. They are for addressing this virus in our schools. And so, you know, it's, it's dealing with high-touch surfaces. The cleaning that happens every night is going to be the same cleaning that would happen every night in any of our classrooms because it's gonna, it's that fogger. It's going to come in there. It's going to hit all of our surfaces. It's going to sit on those surfaces and kill the virus. As far as supports go, I know it's case-by-case, but Ronnie, do you want to talk about it? I know I've been in classrooms where I've seen teachers who are in full PPE, like the kind we would provide to our nurses in terms of like the gown, the face shield, the mask, the gloves. Uh, and those are scenarios where, for example, diapering might be required. And so we're going to provide that kind of level of PPE. There are less, there are cases that would require less PPE. And so again, it's kind of an individualized discussion. But Ronnie, do you want to layer into that at all? Or did you have something you wanted to add on?
Yes, and I think this is a great example for everybody. I want to share with you a response from a principal to a, to a special education teacher today. And this is why we appreciate when you direct staff with questions right back to the principal. Because this staff member sent their principal an email about 9:00 AM, had a response at 10:00 AM, and then a big thank you hug to the principal at, at 11:00 AM because the staff member took their issue directly to the principal. So in short, the staff member expressed some of the same concerns we heard, we heard tonight. And the principal responded, I'm not going to provide the name, but such-and-such has relayed the very valid concerns you all have regarding the daily schedule. We are working on a plan to provide breaks for both of you as well as cover electives. It should be completed today. I've already met with the head custodian. He will be cleaning the classrooms when the kids go to lunch, when you take them out for recess or break and during their electives. If there are other times when students are out of the classroom where cleaning can be completed, just let me know. We'll add that to the schedule. I can also schedule someone to come in after the first hour and clean high-touch areas. With your students and only two more being in the building, I have more flexibility in how we schedule custodial team. So here's a great example of a teacher who took their issue directly to the principal and it was solved immediately. And with lesser numbers in the building right now, that all schools are better able to provide that direct support to a smaller number of staff than they would if all of the students were in the building. I just want to share that.
Is that it for now, Mrs. Felton?
Yes.
Okay, folks, we have an agenda speaker, a Zoom speaker who's now available. And I'll turn it over to Madam Clerk. It's a little deviated, but it seemed the fair thing to do. Okay, Ms. Vernick, please unmute.
Thank you.
Okay, please go ahead.
I am reading a anonymous letter. I have been an elementary school counselor with VB- I have been an elementary school counselor with V B C P S for over a decade, and I'm also a parent of two V B students. Despite my great safety concerns, I have not felt comfortable speaking up at the school board meeting because I don't want to jeopardize the relationships with my students and family. But with the proposal to return option-one students while we are in the red, I cannot remain silent any longer. I want to be in school with my students, and I want my children to be in school learning with their classmates, but not while it is so unsafe. Mental health is the reason that some keep giving as the most pressing concerns for returning students to the building. And as a mental health professional, I agree, of course, we as a society are struggling with increased anxiety and depression during this pandemic. This is unfortunately not a new concern. I have seen drastically increasing numbers of students over the past five years whom I have screened for suicidal ideation and who have been hospitalized at the elementary level. It is tragic, and it is why I have advocated for our school counselors and psychologists. We were set to increase the number of counselors at V B C P S this year until funding disappeared due to the pandemic. School counselors are working harder than ever to meet our students' needs during virtual instruction with lessons, groups, individual sessions, and by collaborating with parents, teachers, teachers and community resources. So yes, mental health is an issue and is definitely impacted by the stresses created by the COVID pandemic. We need more mental health resources in our community, but sending students and staff back into the classroom when the numbers are this high is not the answer. When we are in school face-to-face, we are not able to maintain the health protocols at the elementary level. Students constantly have masks below their noses, they forget to socially distance at recess. There are students who elope from the classroom or engage in dangerous behaviors that require physical intervention by staff several times a day. When the COVID numbers are this high, there is no way to ensure students and staff safety. We must also acknowledge the mental health crisis of educators right now. I comfort my teachers who are breaking into tears on a daily basis, fraught with anxiety over their ever-increasing workload, the constantly shifting expectations, their inability to meet the needs of their students due to unfilled positions or absences of staff who have to quarantine, and fear for their own safety and that of their families. We have already lost several wonderful educators this year. In order to cover those positions, our specialists have been assigned as long-term substitutes, and our students have had multiple instructors as we struggle to ensure positions are temporarily filled. This staffing shortage is only going to escalate if educators have to choose between their own mental health and the job they love. Who is impacted by these issues the most? The students. Our S P E D staff is covering an absolutely unrealistic caseload. Our students with. What?
Second.
I lost the place. Our students with this footing have an increased behavioral episode because we are short-staffed. This is not sustainable and is affecting all the kids. I hear the board members argue most educators felt safe going back to school based on their preferences. This is wholly untrue. I know many of my colleagues. Thank you.
Okay, we were back to Mrs. Weems, I believe. And then Mr. Edwards.
Okay, um, back to the special education group that started back today. And I think Dr. Bergen said it in your comments that this is the same group that was there, basically the same group that was there in the summer. And the metrics were high also. Is that, is that a correct statement? They were as high or higher than they were now?
They were a little higher, yes, ma'am, I think it was, yeah.
Okay, let me repeat that.
Yes.
The metrics were higher than they are today in the summer, and this group was in school in the summer because we felt it was so, so important to be able to provide services to this group of students that may have some extra challenges and need more support. Now, the teachers that taught this group in the summer, are they the same teachers that are now teaching them now, basically? I mean, you may have had one or, okay.
Pretty much, of course, there were just over seven hundred students over the summer that participated in the E S Y program, and here we have twelve hundred students.
So let me also clarify.
Yes.
Some. But it's also just important to say, uh, for clarity, that in the summer, those teachers choose to do that. That is a summer school environment, essentially. It's extended school year, so they choose to come in and work off contract.
But, but they, but they knew what the metrics were, and they knew.
And I, I just wanted, I don't want anybody accusing us of not being clear about the difference, right?
So they chose to teach in the summer, they chose to do the awesome job that they're doing with this, with this special population, okay?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
So now you've got this same group, and, and I know one of my colleagues said that, that they, these children, some of them, which is true, perhaps, could be more medically vulnerable. But again, these students with, during the I E P process and with their parent parental choice, their parents chose, I'm going to send my child that has special needs to school knowing everything, or I'm going to keep them home. And about fifty percent chose to keep home and chose to, to go away.
Correct.
To go to school. Okay, so I, I think that's important, so, so we have choice, we have a special population that, that everybody agrees needs face-to-face. We have a lot of the same teachers that chose to do it in the summer. Okay, now with the teachers now that are teaching this group that started today, how many of them said, I definitely want to, I have to stay home and just teach virtually because of my, I've got compromising health issues?
So that would be a question that I would have to defer to, um, Mr. Bearden in his camp to.
Do we, do we have any in that situation that said, I've got compromising health issues, I need to stay home, but I'm back in the building?
I'm certain we do.
Yeah.
I don't know that we're going to have that number off the top of head. I think we're going to have to get back with you on that number.
And you don't have any ballpark, I mean, is it fifty percent of them, is it ten perc- you don't, how many? Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Um, I would like to, to know that. Um, and I just want to say, you know, just kind of comment, and this will be my second question, and then I've got some more too. I just want to comment that it's been stated that some of us are wanting to get kids back in school, and we're just like, look, cramming it down everybody's throat, mental health, mental health, mental crisis, but then others are saying, we've always had a mental crisis with adolescents. You know, some of us, and I'll speak for myself, think it is important to get the kids back in school, but because of several reasons. Because of the huge, huge, huge educational gaps that were here before the pandemic that are only going to get bigger and bigger and bigger. And we have worked how many years to close the educational gap with special ed and African American, and we still have a huge gap, and this pandemic is going to just make it so, 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 so big that I don't know when we're going to catch up. That's one. Education is, is why I want them back in school. Stability and routine is why I want them to get back in school. Two hot meals a day, and whether, you know, fifty years ago, the schools were for educating kids, whether you like it or agree with it or not, schools now are the lifeline of some of these students and families, it's the lifeline. They get hot meals, they get security, they get stability, they get routine, they're safer, they're safe from, from, um, violence, they're safe from abuse for that time. So those are several reasons. So I just wanted to clear that up from the last speaker that, that says that some of us are just using mental, you know, health. I mean, obviously, we've got from national reports and local that depression, anxiety, and E D, um, emergency department visits and doctor's appointments have skyrocketed and increased by thirty percent, that is alarming. I know about depression from personal family, and I know that this has taken a toll, I understand it. I've been sitting at a desk with my granddaughter for months and months, and I know how hard virtual learning is for her. It may be great for some. In fact, she asked me today if she could have a private meeting with Dr. Spence, so I'll have to get permission to give her your, my, your phone number. But, um, so it's, it's for a very, very different reasons. It's not just mental health, so I don't want to think, you know, have people think that I'm just pushing this one agenda, it's for all those reasons. And, um, again, I want to say, and I've, I said this a few weeks ago, I try to say it every time, I respect all my colleagues, and if you agree with me, that's great. If you say we need to stay home and give your reasons, I don't think it's because you don't care about the mental or the education or the hot meals for our students. If I say I think we need to get kids back in school or some of us, it doesn't mean that we don't care if someone gets sick. You know, we, we get this thrown in our face all the time, you don't care if someone dies, you don't care about the mental health of students, you don't care that they're safe. We're all doing the best we can. And so let's, I just hope the community and we as a board treat each other with respect that we're trying to do what we think after our research, after who we've listened to, what we think is best. I don't think, I think we all care about people, and for the, for the community to say, you're using us as guinea pigs, you're not thinking of us, you don't care if we get sick, you don't care about the mental health, that's not true, we all care. It's just we have different life experiences, we have different viewpoints, and we have different perspectives. So I just want to say, I hope that the community and we as board members treat each other with respect, no matter which, which side of the, the vote this takes. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Edwards.
Mrs. Weems provided a pretty good preamble for, um, this is really tough. The, I, three months ago, I was absolutely proud and ecstatic with the, with the plan that we put in place. Um, I thought it was right on. And I think maybe it's still right on, but I don't know. I do know that things have changed. There are considerable new experience, uh, from schools that have, schools that haven't, um, and I was disappointed that, um, and I don't need to, I'm not trying, denigrating our input from Mrs. Shaw today, but I, you know, the, I, I believe I wasn't the only one who kind of locked in on that plan based on a very healthy dialogue with, um, medical folks that had a regional perspective. Um, and I would hope that sometime in the, as I say, I was kind of hoping we might have another shot at that tonight, um, and we don't. Um, I don't know whether it's feasible to have that in two weeks or not, but I, I think we, you know, things are changing and things, and things are happening, and it may or may not change what that plan ought to be. Um, so like Mrs. Weems implied, we're all up here wrestling with this, and, and it's, and it's not easy. And, um, so, um, that's, uh, my wish list for those that do agenda planning, and as a subset of the agenda planning, you know? This is like way too big to be condensed from, you know, not starting till four o'clock. I mean, we, we ought to be starting at two o'clock and, you know, in, in, in the future, you know? I, I've served with, on this board with, you know, a half a dozen lawyers over the years, and they never had any problem sacrificing a couple billable hours to come in here and do their job. So I, I'm really hoping that we, uh.
Or maybe every week.
Yeah.
Mr. Edwards, can I just ask you to clarify what you just said? Because I don't, I don't know that I followed you. I, I know you, it changed, but like.
Well, yeah, that, that was tangential, that last comment, and, and that's, you know, but we, we need more time. Yeah, maybe we, uh, maybe more, more, more meetings too. I mean, that can be looked at going forward. Um, but, you know, this, this is too important to be, I mean, it's been three weeks, you know, oh my gosh, what's happened in three weeks? All kinds of things, so, um, anyway, that's, that's kind of where I am, and I appreciate the opportunity to share it.
Okay, Dr. Spence, if I may first though, just what my unders- the way I see it is it was, it's a fall plan, and come 2021, I, I, I just think that's the right time to, and we've had some informal discussions, uh, and, and me with certain staff too, that things are evolving, and maybe Dr. Spence can elaborate, but it's still in some ways too soon to really understand what all that means. But I certainly didn't expect that this plan would, would be quote-unquote permanent without reassessment, without, uh, taking into account maybe other metrics that, that should be considered too. Um, I, I see that as, as something that would come from administration for, uh, you know, in another few months when we have more information. Uh, but up to this point, I just feel at least that I can look somebody in the face in the community and say, throughout this fall, every decision made has been true to the metric formula. I mean, every phased in, whether we were phasing students in or at the time, we had a pullback, we were true to that, that metric formula. And it's, that's not set in stone, but that, that's been our, our, and that was developed, as we know, through a lot of consultation with the Department of Health, with, with our local medical panel. But, but I've never seen it as something that, that isn't, can't be flexible in the future, and I even think the medical panel had said as much to us too. But it, it's what we have now, and I think in fairness to the community, what's, they need to know that what we have now is what guides us until we have more serious discussions that would come from the medical panel and the, and the, the administration. So, Dr. Spence?
Yeah, I think just, just kind of leaning into that a little bit, the, and, and to Mr. Edwards' comments, um, and I had maybe tried unsuccessfully to convey a little bit of that earlier, that I, I, I do believe things are evolving in terms of everybody's understanding. What hasn't evolved is the guidance, right? And so, uh, I, I want to give you assurance, Mr. Edwards, that we have been in regular contact with the Health Department and regular contact with any number of members of the, the physicians group that we were working with. Um, and while there is this sense that we can, we can evolve to a different way of looking at the data, we're not there yet, that's the problem. That's what I was also trying to point out when I said, like, so you, you may have a CDC director saying, well, we, we're in a different place, but the guidance is not catching up to where we might be. And barring all of that, I don't think we, I mean, if I, I've tried to convey this for the last eight months too. If I got guidance that was different, you'd have it. I'd be standing before you saying, we have different guidance and we need to adjust our thinking as a result of that different guidance. We don't have it. And a, a comment, and I, and I'll just, I'm not saying this to be combative, a comment by the CDC director in an interview is not the same thing as guidance from the CDC. And so, it's just not. And so, you know, again, we, we don't have that yet. That may lead to and push, uh, for them to provide different guidance to schools. Uh, one of the frustrating things about all of this, as we've talked about all the way along, is the kind of inconsistent guidance that we've gotten from the Health Department and the CDC, and it, it kind of evolves and changes over time, and then whether or not that's aligned to what we're doing, and then trying to make sure that we, we do evolve. Um, but the idea that the guidance has evolved to a place where community transmission data doesn't matter, uh, we're not there. Uh, could be that we get there, but, but we're not there right now. Um, and, and I have been pressing and asking those questions, Mary's been pressing and asking those questions, and I promise you, when we have it. Uh, and then all that said, we can also invite those folks back certainly at the next meeting and talk about where we are.
We have Ms. Owens and then Mrs. Riggs and Mrs. Manning.
Okay. Um, could we, uh, and I don't know if this is something that's already, um, set out, but with our, the current plan of having our sped kids back in the, the buildings in the red, is there a, um, is there a cutoff? Obviously, we can't get any redder than red, but is there a time, a number, a metric or something that we're looking at, or is we just are going to have them in indefinitely? Which, you know, I'm not saying that that's a yea or a nay, but. Which, you know, I'm not saying that that's a yea or a nay, but it would be helpful to know and where, I guess what changed from, I'm happy that we took the pause when we got to the red metric. I think that that was the right decision, and I, I thank you for it. Um, did we know then that we were going to just pause them and bring them back in, and what was the point? And do we have a ceiling for that? If that makes sense?
One, one more time about building the airplane while it's flying without the blueprint? Did we know then that we were going to bring them back? No. What we knew is we went into red, and we wanted to pause long enough for our team to look at it and go, "What do we do now?" Uh, and we did, and we looked at our plan, and we talked about needs, and we, I mean, our whole team, you know, you know, we have a group of people, about 40 people, that meet and talk about this on a regular basis, um, kicked this around about what to do about special education, because it's the fir, one of the first questions we asked. Okay, what do we do about special education? And we, we did go back into the plan, and we did remind ourselves, it's in there. It says, "Red, yellow, designated groups of special education students can and should be in school." We went to the V, uh, VDH, VDOE guidance, and it's in there. Highest risk, you still should have special education students face-to-face instruction if that's at all possible. Um, and so we made the, I made frankly the decision after a good discussion with our team, we were going to bring them back. So it, I get it, super frustrating. I, I really do understand that kind of back and forth is frustrating. This whole thing is frustrating. Um, to your first question, so that's the second thing, but to your first question, is there like a place and time when we're not? All, all I can tell you there is we're just going to have to keep working with the Department of Health and monitoring how it's going in our schools right now with these students.
Okay. And you mentioned that in the plan, we have the red-yellow for special ed. If we are at red-red, is that the ceiling for special ed, or is that no longer a...
I think it's a conversation that we have to have with the Department of Health and see how it's going. I mean, I really feel that way right now with these kids.
Okay. I, I will say, um, I guess as my second question slash comment, that I understand the need to have something in place, um, for our special ed population, because a lot of them are not able to be served the way they, they should be online. They're, they're not able to, um, and that's problematic. And it is a responsibility that we have. On the other hand, I really have heartburn with being in red and rising. It, it might feel a little different if we were red and steady, or if we were red and declining, um, but red and rising for our teachers that we are sending in, knowing that they're not going to have the social distance with these, um, students, that we know that they're not going to have the masking, that we know that they're not going to have the mitigation factors, that we are saying what is what makes the rest of our teachers safe, and why we, we've pulled our other teachers back, um, because it's not safe for them to be there with the mitigation factors. But we're sending our special ed teachers in on red and rising without the mitigation factors, and it's hard for me to reconcile that in my, in my mind, even knowing, and I, I want to reemphasize, that I know, I understand, I'm a parent of a special ed student from our district, um, not a level-two special ed student, but I, I get it. I, I'm on the CPS, and I'm hearing concerns, and so I, I get it, but I'm having difficulty reconciling why it's safe for the special ed teachers without the mitigations when it's not safe for our regular teachers with the mitigations.
So the best I'm going to be able to give you the answer, and it's really going to be the same answer every time right now, with that group, we can shrink the bubble. We can make it a smaller group of students, smaller group of staff, and we can put mitigations in place. So I wouldn't say with no mitigations. I mean, you're hearing the extreme cases. I wouldn't say there are no mitigations. When I'm in those rooms, when I was in those rooms this summer, and when I've been in those rooms this school year, when we had those students back, the teachers had full PPE on, the students were wearing masks. And, and there are cases when that won't happen, and then we work with the IEP team to figure out how to keep them safe. So I hear you. The best answer I have for you is we got to shrink that bubble. And if those numbers go up to, you know, continue to rise, that's a conversation we have to have with the Health Department.
Okay.
The data that's, you know, the, not the data, the, the, the language that's reflected right now in the VDH guidance is highest risk, those students can still be in school and should be in school if it's possible.
Okay. And I do want to just, um, re, rephrase, because I think it's, it is unfair to say with no mitigations. I, I think it's fair to say with, with much less mitigations in many circumstances. And so I think that's fair correction.
Okay, Mrs. Riggs and Mrs. Manning, we'll do one, try to get this through one more round of questions.
First of all, I want to, um, reiterate what you just said, that that's exactly how I feel, uh, with the, the special ed and the sped, uh, students and teachers. And, um, there's a couple of things I just wanted to point out with that one more time. Um, you know, it's, um, even though it's such a low percent of children, uh, 3.37% of those with intellectual disabilities are the ones that have, that get the COVID-19, and the level-two students are exactly those kids. Um, they are allowed to ten, to attend school up to 21 years of age. They're adults, okay? They're not children anymore. They're adults at that time. And we know adults are more susceptible, and also more, they can spread it easily. So I'm thinking about the teachers as well. The other thing is, because we have them back, and if we do continue to do that, would we consider, like, uh, New York is doing, testing these children, doing a weekly testing of them? Is that fair to even think about doing? So those are just my concerns and my thoughts and responses.
We, we haven't yet developed a testing protocol for students for some reasons. We've talked with the board before. Uh, it's certainly something I can take up with Mary, and we can come back with a recommendation on that. Um, I do need to offer clarification. We did put in a communication to, uh, to our families that, um, if we did go to red for both metrics that we look at, then we would go to virtual for those students. We did put that in a communication to our families, so I should, I should clarify that.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Manning, Mrs. Melnuck.
So I would like to thank Ms. Williams for articulating a, a lot of how I feel regarding our viewpoints here. Um, I know that all my colleagues and staff want what's best for our students, our staff. I, I don't think anyone wants ill will for anyone. And I, and I hope that you recognize that that's how I feel as well. Um, I think that we, we look at things differently, as Ms. Williams said, based upon our life experiences and our experiences in the community. Um, I just want to share a couple of things that, that people have shared with me. I've, I've gotten more, um, phone calls, um, over the last two weeks from parents and teachers than I have in the four years being on this school board, maybe combined. Um, I had a dad, a five-year-old twin, um, with students with special needs reach out to me last week, and he just, he was exasperated. He just didn't know what to do, and he said, "Someone told me you might be able to listen." And he said, "You know, my kids got marked absent for not being logged onto their Chromebook, and he said they can't log onto their Chromebook. They're five, I have to help them do it. I get them on their Chromebook, and then I can't keep my daughter's shirt on." This is how these parents are struggling. And, and when I'm, and when I'm talking about trying to get our kids back into school, these are the types of things that I'm thinking about. Um, I, I got a message from a parent, um, talking about the teen that, that spoke here this evening. She said, "The teen that talked about kids not wanting to get out of bed in PJs for class made my daughter cry." She said that it's not that they don't want to get out of bed, it's they can't. She said that this year has been the toughest academically, but the social emotional toll on her and her friends is even worse. I don't, I don't talk about my kids very much because I don't want them to be on the front page of the news. Um, but I have two teenagers at home, and I am blessed and thankful to God that I am able to be there with them and to make sure they're getting out of bed every morning, because if I wasn't, they probably wouldn't be. And my kids are very highly motivated kids and learners. And so I, I just, I just, you know, wanted to, to share that with you, of why I so desperately want our kids back in school. And I, I think that we can do it safely. We were doing it safely. Um, the mitigations that were put in place, that I think Dr. Spence, you and your staff did a phenomenal job of those mitigation strategies. Um, and, you know, experts, I know that you said, Dr. S, Dr. Spence, that it was just a random statement that the CDC director said, but he said it, and he believes it, that all schools should remain open, it is the safest place for children to be, and it's counterproductive to close schools. Dr. Anthony Fauci recently said a similar thing. Dr. Atlas, who served on the coronavirus task force, said the same thing. We had an ER doctor in here today who treats COVID patients, and he's a dad, and he said, "Science supports sending our kids back to school." And he said, "The cure cannot be worse than the disease." And these are the reasons why I am pushing hard to get our kids, our option-one kids back to school. I fully support option-two kids. I fully support, I, I, I would not support a plan that did not offer options for people to remain virtual. So that's extremely important to me as well. I hope you all had an opportunity to read the letter that I sent to you last week. Um, and, you know, I said that I was going to be making a motion, and so I would like to go ahead and make that motion now. I, I did, um, it's, it's basically what I have in the letter, but I summarized it.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mrs. Manning. It's been pointed out, we have one member who hasn't had a chance to speak at all. Can we hold on, on to this for a moment?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. So that, my question was going to be barring any substitute motions. This was on, the 2020 plan was on the action, it was under action, so it required a vote, but I'm not sure what we were voting on. I mean, if Mrs. Manning's going to have a substitute motion, then I understand...
It's not a substitute motion, it's a motion. You made a motion earlier, and we voted on it, so now it's another motion.
I know, but this was on the, this, this was on action. I don't know, we were going to have to vote on something. I don't know what we were...
We, we voted to have the presentation and discussion, okay?
Before that, though. I mean, it's, it's listed. There's a, in our script, it says we were going to vote on something. I don't, I mean, are we looking at changing something? Is there a metric that's changing?
Okay, I...
Is the...
My motion...
Not yours, but is, I understand you have one. I'm okay with that. I'm just saying, it was the administration, did they have something? There have been some changes in some language tonight. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
No, ma'am. We, we did not ask for this on action, but I understand that it was asked to be on action for a motion specifically, so I, and I think in your opening comments around this, you did say that you didn't retain subsidiary motions after, so...
I, right, I did, but I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something from the division.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, sure. You want me to go now? Okay. So, um, would you give one to Ms. Hughes? And I have one for you, can you pass? I should have enough for everybody over there as well. Okay, so I'll go ahead and, and read my motion. Um, I move that the Virginia Beach School Board adjusts the fall reopening plan as follows. Remove the current metrics that determine school openings and closures. Two, return all option-one students back to school starting on December 7th as they were on November 12th. So that would include the hybrid option at the middle and high school level. Number three, monitor individual schools, and if an outbreak occurs of COVID transmission, transmission within a school, then the superintendent, in consultation with Mary Shaw and the Virginia Department of, Virginia Beach Department of Health, may make a decision to close an individual school. If COVID transmission within Virginia Beach schools becomes a concern, the superintendent can request an emergency meeting of the school board to discuss, and the board can determine how to move forward.
Is there a second? Ms., Mrs. Holtz?
You, is, are you, I've asked for a second on the motion. Am I on?
Mrs. Williams, okay.
Do we need a second for that? Because I, I'm like to follow up.
All right, so we have that, we have Mrs., Mrs. Manning's motion on the floor, and...
Ms. Williams, that's your second?
Yes, okay. So, Mrs. Holtz, do...
Thank you. Uh, Madam Chair, I would like to make a substitute motion, um, and I would like to explain my reasons for that. We are now in the middle of a global pandemic, and I need to repeat that, because we've had over 50 speakers tonight, only two of them even mentioned the word pandemic. Everyone is feeling the strain of that. We all want to do what's best for our kids, and we all want our kids to get back to school, but this pandemic is a shadow on everything, and history will record what we are, how we are responding to it tonight. The last pandemic in U.S. history was over 101 years ago, so your grandchildren, or your grandchildren would be talking about us. So it's important that we respond well to this and do this right for our kids. And I go back a little bit here in, to March. We closed our schools last March, because nationwide, there were like 186,000 deaths and, oh, cases of COVID-19, as of last night. We now have 4,252,822. The numbers continue to rise, and I like what Jessica said, I like that phrase, "red and rising." That's really why I'm speaking here tonight. We have opened our schools for our most vulnerable students in the moment where we are red and rising. That doesn't make any sense to me. Returning students to, and the staff particularly, to schools when the metric is in the red, we shouldn't even be having a discussion here now about it. Um, and I also realize that in the spring, when the plan was made, in a, in a crisis situation, large organizations such as us, usually what they do is assess the situation, you make a plan...
Point of order, Madam Chair. I was going to say, is there a motion here, Ms. Holtz?
Uh, well, I, my motion, my motion, I write initially...
And then we, and then we can have the discussion, okay?
Oh. I wrote the motion initially, but I wanted to support it with some, some of my thoughts.
You have, you have to make, we're asking for the motion, and then a second, and then we can have discussion.
Okay, thank you so much.
Well, what did we say?
Read it again?
Read it on your end.
Okay. I make a motion that no in-person instruction, including special ed students, will take place when either of the Virginia Beach City Public School health metrics is in the red range. I also move that after a metric is in the red zone, we should remain in the yellow zone for at least seven days until we can return to in-person instruction safely. That was my motion.
Is there a second? Mrs. Riggs? All right, discussion on the substitute motion.
May I continue?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I won't repeat what I said initially, but I'll go on to say, we like that, I like that plan we made in the spring. We had hundreds of, uh, professionals with input into that, and I look at this, what we are now calling the fall plan, really an evolution of that. I don't feel there are any drastic changes, and I've also said, I feel that we've tweaked the plan as far as the timeline was involved, but it was a good plan, and we should stick to it. Uh, Dr. Spence said himself at our school board meeting on November 10th, if we get to the red, that's an automatic trigger to bring kids black back. If we get to the red, we will go back to virtual. I respect our superintendent, but I also expect him to keep to his promises to our parents and to our teachers particularly. They have, there are good reasons for that, and it is not enough justification to open this just for special ed students, and I feel it's an over-aggressive approach to a safe return to face-to-face instructions. We had a presentation tonight, and... We had a presentation tonight, and we saw that they had a five-item bulleted list as to why the numbers were rising. That only cemented my belief that the schools should remain closed. Having a successful July return of special ed students does not justify this aggressive approach now. So we dodged a bullet. We may not be that lucky this time. Right now, our teachers are in the highest-risk category, and people have said, a few comments were made, well, what has changed? That has changed. The age group in which this virus is rising and attacking is not the youth. And it's not old people, as I said initially. It's that middle group. That's where our teachers fall. And so I am, at this time, concerned about them. So far, with our focus has been getting kids and students back to school, and that is as it should be. However, I feel that in our anxious concern to do what's right for our students, we have not shown enough concern for the safety of our teachers. And in an effort to put students first, let's ask ourselves, have we put teachers last? I'm getting that feeling from teachers. At the beginning of this pandemic, we often heard that it's the elderly. The elderly get it, the young don't, and there's no real problem with spreading. That's not true today. And I'll repeat again, red and rising. We need to wait a little bit on this. But if you check the state graphs right now, the virus has seen a tremendous jump. One of the... One of the slideshows showed the Empire State Building. That's about it. That's where most of our teachers fall. I mentioned that before. It kind of reminds me of a three-legged stool. You cannot have a return to face-to-face classes unless we have healthy teachers. And let's face it, we need to balance that stool and think of everybody involved in this. I've spoken to many ed teachers. I've spoken to many nurses, and they have emailed me again. And I know all of us have been inundated with calls, but this is what one of them says, a nurse. The fact that VBCPS has returned our most vulnerable students and those in special needs and the staff today, while we are still in the red, is truly unconceivable. Many of these students have already compromised immune systems and have masked exemptions. A lot of the public isn't aware of some of the challenges that our special ed students face. Many, of course, all of them have learning challenges, but it runs the gamut from A to Z. Some of them have health issues. Some of them are physically and mentally handicapped. And so we're not just talking about one group. I mean, there's... Within that special ed group, they have many, many challenges that the public doesn't even know about, but special ed teachers do. I know they love their students, and the ones that have called me do not feel like they're ready to go back to school, and they don't feel it's safe for their kids either. One of our speakers tonight said, "We've got teachers that are ready and willing and able to go back." They're not ready to go back. They're not willing to go back, and they're not ready to go back. In concluding, we can make it through a few more months of virtual learning, but we cannot recover if we lose a child. Let's err. If we're going to err, let's do it on the side of caution. Every single public health official that I've heard has said that the next few months are going to see the numbers of infections and death go up, not down. Again, I say red and rising. At the very least, we should keep children home until after the incubation period associated with the Thanksgiving holiday, and until that is passed, and that would be about like December 14th. Perhaps the metrics will change. I hope they will, and that is why I have a substitute petition tonight to have everybody go virtual until we're safe, or at least we have leveled off. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Melnick, and then Mrs. Anderson.
No, mine's not to Mrs. Holtz's. I have something to the original motion, so I'll have to... I'll have to wait.
Okay, Mrs. Anderson.
Well, I just have something else I wanted to say about... And I think Mrs. Holtz actually said them, but, you know, she pointed out that several of these students, these special ed students, have health problems, and their immune systems are compromised. And so, you know, I have been concerned about the teachers. You all heard me earlier. They're being very concerned over the special ed teachers, and I wanted to be assured that that they at least would have proper PPE, and they shouldn't be denied that. In fact, I don't even think they should have to ask for it. But, you know, that aside, you know, I believe that the fact that we have so many special ed kids who have waivers and are not wearing masks is a huge consideration that we have to realize. And the fact that not only are we going to see a rise, red and rising, after Thanksgiving, but before we know it, we're going to be here at Christmas, and then people are going to be traveling again. One of the teachers that contacted me was concerned because she knew that one of her students that was coming back in person had traveled out of state. She doesn't know where that, you know, where that child that student has been or who that student has been with. And it's incumbent upon the parents to notify, you know, I think teachers, if they have been traveling out of state. I think that, you know, the parents should take that responsibility of saying, hey, we traveled out of state for the holidays. They should take that responsibility and say, hey, I'm not going to put you at risk. But they don't. They don't do that because they know... I mean, I'm the first to say that these special ed kids that are there now really do need to be in face-to-face. I understand that. But at the same time, you have to weigh that against, you know, are they bringing the virus to school? Are they exposing our teachers and our staff? And, you know, I'm the first to believe that you need to put students first, but to put students first, you also need to show teachers respect. Because you're not putting students first if you're not taking care of your teachers who are going to teach those students. So that's all I had to say about that, but you can put me back in the queue for the next one after we voted on this one.
Okay, Mr. Edwards. Mr. Edwards, did you want to go?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I appreciate the fact that Mrs. Williams brought out very clearly that the risk we're asking, you know, that is in the special ed classes, the small classes today and going forward, is virtually identical to what we had over the summer. And we have a moral obligation, and we have a legal obligation too, but as I shared with somebody that was interviewing me yesterday, I feel a moral obligation to provide that free and appropriate education to the special education students. And we're just, we just flat out cannot even come close to doing that virtually. And that's why I couldn't support the substitute.
Okay. Mrs. Owens?
Thank you. I appreciate Ms. Holtz's motion. I still think it's a difficult... It's still a difficult situation. The... And I love that we're going to go ahead and use the phrase "red and rising." That part is something that I think we really have to keep in mind as we're making this decision. And as we're comparing it to the summertime, where the metrics were at a higher rate, I think it's important for us to keep in mind that the summertime didn't correlate at the same time as flu season, which is what we're asking of the teaching staff now. The summertime didn't have the increased rates in the younger adult population, which is where we are now. The summertime was voluntary for teachers who chose to be there, which is not what we have now. And we don't even have the information available to us today to say how many of the teachers that are going to be back in these classrooms are teachers that chose that option versus teachers that did not have a choice. And it might, it might feel differently if we had that information to be able to say. We have six teachers who, you know, needed virtual, who asked for virtual, and we're not able to get it, and we're going to try and do something else to accommodate that situation. But we don't have the information, whether it's 10%, 50%, how many of these teachers are going into this situation during flu season, non-voluntarily, while we're red and rising. And to make that decision now, after Thanksgiving, where we haven't had the full numbers of whatever we have coming from the Thanksgiving spread, moving into the Christmas season, it's not a risk that I feel comfortable in taking for our teachers. I will say that I understand we may need at some point to have special ed students in the classroom while we have a red-yellow. And I'm open to that, but not during the holiday season, while we haven't seen the fallout from the Thanksgiving holiday. While we're still rising, I'm not comfortable with it. And so, while I don't know that I would support Ms. Holtz's motion forever, if it's the only other option on the table right now, as we're looking at sending teachers in during the flu season, when I don't know how many of them have asked not to do this, then I would support it.
So I can answer that, because I did get an answer from HR on that. So it was less than a dozen staff members who've now indicated that they would need some medical accommodation who otherwise would go back. And we're working with them on whether or not we can do that.
Thank you. Who's on top here? Mrs. Holtz?
Thank you once again. I need to respond to Ms. Williams and also Mr. Edwards. Maybe I spoke too fast, but they seem to equate the July introduction of special ed with the now that we started today. It's not the same, and I tried to point it out, that the age range... Look at the numbers. You can see them every day in the newspaper. The age range for young adults who are getting this are exactly what our teachers are. Age is like 30 to 45. That's why our teachers are concerned. And no, they have not been given the option. Now, at least, I don't really remember how they... You say they volunteered in the summer. Okay. They have not been given the option, and there's a limit. I understand the reason for that. There's a limited number of special ed teachers. We love them. We need them dearly, but not at the expense to their health. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Manning.
Yeah, I just want to address the red and rising statement. Today, our numbers were 379 for the eastern region. Last week, it was 409. So I wouldn't necessarily say that we're currently rising. And our hospitalizations and deaths are much lower than they... For the eastern region than they were at the peak.
Okay, Ms. Williams.
Okay, so we've heard a couple things. We've heard teachers chose to teach in the summer, but they didn't have an option to teach virtual or in-person. I thought they did. Dr. Spence, can you clarify what Ms. Holtz just said?
Yeah, I mean, we'd have... Let me clarify relative to this moment in time. This, the... Sorry, I'm going to take a drink. The teachers who we've asked to return to teach this group of students, we've had fewer than a dozen indicate that they were unable to do so due to a medical condition. We... That, at the beginning of the year, you remember, we asked all of our teachers, which included our special education teachers, what's your preference, virtual or otherwise, and we tried to accommodate as many of those as we could. I will say, it's probably likely that more special education teachers were unable to be accommodated because more of those parents were choosing for their children not to be taught virtually, so... But I don't have those numbers.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think that this is an aggressive approach by any means. Like Mr. Edwards said, it's... We have got to help these students. They are the most vulnerable in their academic by far than any other group. And this is a very... It's not aggressive. It's the approach that we have used and that Dr. Spence said we would use, and so I cannot support otherwise. Thank you.
All right, is there anybody else before we go ahead? Mrs. Anderson?
I was just told that OPEC went into schools and told administration that special ed teachers will do this. And this particular person is stating that 12 is not accurate. No one is addressing the fact that Level 2 kids are more likely to get this particular virus and die if they get it. I just think that we need to be thinking in terms of... It's not like it was in the summer at all. Kids are inside now. We can't even, we can't even say that we can take... These particular special ed kids can't even go outside in some cases. You can take them out for a few minutes, which in some cases, they need two people to move them down the hallway. So this is not the same as it was in the summer at all. So I don't like the fact that we're equating, you know, well, we haven't had any kids die. We haven't had any teachers die. We haven't had that many people in hospitals. Why are we equating it to that? How many teachers have to die before we finally say we're... Not even one. Not even one dead teacher is acceptable to me. Not even one dead kid is acceptable. Not one. That's what we're talking about. And maybe it won't happen. God forbid it does. But I'm not happy with the fact that we're asking our teachers to put their lives on the line. And I haven't been happy about it for a long time, but this... The plan that we had in the fall was something that I was able to stick, I felt like we should stick to. And now, you know, this particular time, I'm going to support this because I feel like, you know, as I said, it's not acceptable to have one person die, not even one.
Is there any other discussion before we submit this to a vote? Mrs. Riggs, I'm sorry.
I am going to agree with Ms. Anderson and Ms. Owens, as well as Ms. Holtz. I know that we are judging and making this decision, Dr. Spence, by looking at the VDOE's recommendations. And I understand it's important for our children to be educated. And they are the most vulnerable with their education, but they're also the most vulnerable with their health and their life. And so because of this, I mean, we can, we've seen the charts because they've been shared with us tonight. If you've looked at your email or had the opportunity. And it is very clear that children with special needs are more vulnerable to this. And because they are, I think it's important, if we, to look at both, not only the children, but the teachers, both of them. And I think we need to... We're in the red. It's red, red. It's not going down. It is rising. It's red-yellow. It's going up. It's not going down. I think we don't need to keep them in school. I think it's time to take them out.
I'll just comment that as far as the students, the families have made the choice to have their children in school. So they've come to terms with... They have their reasoning for that.
So they've come to terms with, they, they have their reasoning for that. And I, I've had, I have some added assurance as far as individual teachers, that administration will work with, with, with some of these teachers that fall into this, this more vulnerable So is, are we, is there anybody else before we submit this to a vote? Should we, do we need to reread the motion? Is it, Ms. Holtz, would you, okay, I'll be happy to, since we all have a copy. I will make a motion that no in-person instruction, including special education students, will take place when either of the VBCPS health metrics is in the red range. I also move that after a metric is in the red zone, we should remain in the yellow zone for at least seven days until we can return to in-person instruction safely. So with that, we'll start with a show of hands, those in favor of this substitution motion as it was just read.
Okay, Mrs. Chairwoman Rye, we have four yeses. Holtz, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Owens.
All opposed, kindly raise your hand.
Those opposed are Ms. Hughes, Ms. Felton, Ms. Manning, Ms., Ms. Weems, Ms. Melnick, Chairwoman Rye, Mr. Edwards.
Does that cut? We don't have any abstentions, correct?
No abstentions.
Right, so the, so the motion, the substitute motion has, has not passed. So that leads us back to the original motion. And we have a cue for that, starting with Ms. Melnick and Mrs. Anderson.
So I, like Mrs. Manning, don't like to talk too much about my boys. I talk about one a little more, but he's a college freshman. He suffered through COVID of his senior year at Kellum. He is suffering through his first semester at, in college. He participates in Zoom from his dorm room and probably in his bed. He is very busy on the baseball team, so he does get dressed, but he and his brother and some other friends recently shared their Zoom experiences, and I understand it's, it's not fun, it's very tough. It's been a very hard semester for these kids. But we, we, we don't have a choice as parents. We just have to follow what, what the university has outlined for these kids, and we follow. We don't, we, we don't have a voice. Even though we write the checks, we just follow what they say. And so while I respect your motion, I just, I wanted to say, I think, number one, we really need to stick with a plan that, that we put into motion a few months ago. We have had a large number of people who have begged us to stay the course with our 2020 plan, and I think that, that we need, that we need to honor their wishes too. So I'm more inclined to just keep things through the end of this year the way they are. So that, that's numbers one and two. I, in monitoring individual schools, if an outbreak occurs, in theory is great, but there are many households where there are multiple children that go to multiple schools. And so same family, they share the same germs, but one goes to Christopher Farm, one goes to Princess Anne, and one goes to Kellum. Then you're sending one, you might not be sending another, but they all live together. So that's a really tough piece there. And number four, that's, that's a tough one. In theory, that's great too, but quite frankly, this is really an administrative decision. And they have worked very hard on, on these plans, and to continually subject our families to these 10-hour meetings with hours-long debates is just really just so unfair. It's just so unfair. And I think that as we grow with, in our understanding of this virus, that perhaps moving forward for a second semester, we can, we can look at tweaking this as we muddle through our winter months. But I think for right now, we need to stick with the metrics that were outlined in the original plan. And, you know, I hope and pray every day that everyone's doing their part to, to mitigate. And I hope that people are wearing their masks and choosing carefully what, what, what to do and what not to do. And so that's why I can't support, while I respect your motion, I, I can't support it, and I, I would just like to see us stay the course for right now. I know it's painful.
Mrs. Anderson?
First, I want to say that I'm anxious to get our students back in person also. We all are, but only when it's safe. This proposal is like rolling the dice and hoping that a number won't come up. It's been said that the odds are not high for students to spread the virus to teachers and staff. Well, the odds are not high that I'll roll the dice and get snake eyes, but we all know it could happen. I ask my colleagues to consider the odds of losing a teacher or staff member to this virus. What are the odds of students spreading the virus to someone who's immune suppressant? What are the odds? We don't really know for sure. But just like rolling the dice and landing snake eyes, we all know it can happen. So I'm not willing to roll the dice for our teachers and staff. I'm not willing to roll the dice for our students. I'm not willing to do that and take a chance just because somebody has decided that they, they're tired of this virus and they want our students back in school. I'm tired of the virus too. Everybody's tired of the virus. Our society is tired of hearing about the virus. But we really, really need to take into consideration the odds and the safety concerns of everyone, students, teachers, and staff. So I'm not in favor of this, this proposal.
Um, Mrs. Felton, and then Mrs. Holtz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This has been a hard tussle for all of us, and I can respect and understand Ms. Manning's proposal, her motion with this particular motion she's putting forth. I've been wrestling with this scenario from day one, and it seemed like we were coming back to square one in a vicious cycle about the things we have to do. And the reason why we were doing it is because we all care. We all have feelings. We all been there. And I've heard people tell, tell personal stories as well. I can name 10 families right off the top, living in Virginia Beach, that has been touched by COVID, some severe, some manner, or some deaths, right in Virginia Beach. And some of them had students in school as well. Students had to stay home. I can name them off, but that's just my personal story. And I've always been concerned and aroused with the prospect of putting teachers on the front line, being in front, having to serve, just like the doctors in the emergency rooms, what they had to do and what they had to go through and how they prepared. Always championing teachers, because I always felt like that anyone that teaches, standing before students, it's a calling. It's not just something that you do, it's a calling, and you take passion on it, and you hold on to it, and you will walk, and those teachers will walk through the storm for their students and give all that they have. The staff has been my priority and how they had to go through. And we've had cases where, we had cases in, in some of our buildings that they had to deal with, and students, especially those that were most vulnerable. And my first thought was, this education thing will be student loss, educational loss, and that was what I talked about, what I had aroused with when we first started putting in place the mediations about how we were going to teach our students. And that still is my nightmare. Someone said, said to us tonight, how do you all sleep? And I want to say, not good. We don't sleep well. We're thinking about this. And, and we all embrace this scenario, this COVID, what we're in. We all embrace it personally because we know the decision that we make is not just haphazardly, it touches a lot of lives. So for that call, with me having to wrestle with the first plan and back and forth conversation and really giving up some, even after talking to the doctors, I literally talked to Dr. Shaw, Dr. Lindsay, Dr. Rollin, and had personal conversations because at one time, I saw no one actually really talking about African-Americans or the brown population or those individuals that were dealing with this subject matter, with this COVID. And I dealt, and I've been wrestling. So for that cause, for me to try to get back into another, two other motion, it's, it's too emotional, it's too drastic for me. And God knows I do. Understand the teachers, even though this, when we first come back, I talked to many teachers, even this week, many teachers, and hearing their fears and their doubts and wanting us to understand, and that's why we do care. So for me, I appreciate, I do, and I respect what Ms. Manning has put forward here and how she's written it out. Some of, some of it I can digest, there are some, some I can't. But for me right now, I need to, and I feel to stay the course to where I'm going, making my decision.
Okay, Ms. Holtz.
Am I on? Oh, okay. So much has been said in comments tonight from parents and also in one of the proposals about socialization. Kids need to get back so they can socialize and be with their friends. Well, I can tell you from my experience with one member of my family, he was moving from fifth grade elementary into middle school, and he was excited to go back face-to-face, because now he's virtual. And the first week, I said, hey, are there any kids there that you recognize from elementary? He said, how would I? They're all wearing a mask. And then I said, well, can you chat across the aisles to other kids? No, we can't do that. You can't move out of your seat. I'm making this point because the parents that are begging us for socialization for their kids, it is not the real world. It is not the, the school system, the school classroom that we are used to. And it's not going to change for, until a while. He said, and when he came back to virtual, I said, well, how do you feel about this? He said, well, if I had to choose, I'd choose virtual. I sit in the back of the room, and when the teacher starts her instruction, she has a mask, and she projects her voice very loudly. When she gets into the lesson, I, she's muffled, I don't know what she's saying. I can get up and go to the bathroom when I'm at home. I don't need permission or an escort. You know, I can, I can also take my mask off at home. So there are many, I mean, it's illusionally for parents to think their kids are going to be socialized, and they're not. All of us got a letter from a kindergarten teacher saying, you cannot sing because you take your mask off and you spread germs, and you cannot dance. Well, that's what kindergarten kids do all the time. They are not allowed to do that. So parents need to think about that things. And I'm, I'm not the first individual who has had that experience with a student, that now they prefer virtual because of all these things. They kind of feel like they're prisoners in school. Anyhow, that's my comment.
We have Dr. Spence and then Mrs. Manning.
Yeah, and, and so, yeah, I just, since I weighed in on sort of what we were thinking about special education, I was just hoping to weigh in on what we were thinking about, about this. And I would start echoing particularly Mrs. Weems' sort of comments that have been echoed by other people about like where everybody is on this. And if you, if you fall on one side of this motion or the other, it isn't about liking teachers or not liking teachers or liking kids or not liking kids. And so, so I want to at least clarify from the administration's perspective, we've, we've certainly been called a lot of names and accused of a lot of things here in the last few months. And, and I, I need it to be abundantly clear that, like you all, the administration cares deeply about our teachers. And like you all, we also care deeply about our kids. Somebody asked me the other day, you know, could you help me understand why you pulled kids out, why you don't want them back? And, and so I talked a little bit about, you know, the metrics and consistency, the need for consistency, follow the plan, that it's the board's plan, and so therefore I have to follow that plan anyway, which is why we did it, but that I think we ought to continue to follow that plan. And this, well, you just don't care about my kid, you don't understand what my kid's going through. And I at least want to say this to you all, so that you have an insight into my decision-making and why I bring you the recommendations that I do, or what's, what's involved there. All of you know I have children in the school system. You know that I have four of them in the school system, two that went to college, right? And, and I have a middle schooler, I've got an elementary school student, I've got two seniors who are having like the worst possible senior year of their life, right, like many seniors, right? And so those of us with seniors get that. Although I will say, one of them, who is an ATC student, wants to go back to the ATC, but really doesn't want to go back to his home school, and it isn't a knock on the home school, he's just thriving in the virtual environment. But I have another senior who was so happy when we got her back to school, for the whole two days that she got back to school. I have another one of my children who is exactly like a student we heard about tonight. He is failing all of his classes. He, when we got him back to school, he was passing. In fact, he was getting As again. And now he's back in virtual, and he started failing again. I see it. I see it at home. We're not a family that has people at home to take care of our, these kids, right? I'm at work all the time. My wife is a nurse, and most of you know that. And so she's not, she's not home on, on many days during the week. And so we see all of these struggles, and I, I say that just to, I want folks to know, like, this isn't some sort of callous, you know, just purely metrics-driven decision-making here. Like, like, I'm dealing with what our parents are dealing with, and I'm empathizing with our teachers greatly at the same time. And, and what I'm trying to do, what I view my role as for you all, what I think the administration has to do is give you our best thinking as the educational experts in the room, but also the, like, my role as a superintendent has been and always has been and always will be to hear our teachers, to hear our community members, to hear our parents, and to understand what our students need. And to take all of that and try to give you the best thinking I can that helps you address those all sometimes competing challenges, probably never more so than right now in this moment. And, and so I, I say all of that just to say, you know, that I'm, I'm kind of in the same boat as you all. Like where I, you know, when I come down on something, it isn't because I vehemently disagree with an idea, it's that I just, I think that there are other things we have to consider. All that, all that said, I really strongly ask and hope that you'll hear our recommendation to stay the course, that, that we think we have a plan that works. I, I do believe guidance will evolve, but I'll repeat, it hasn't yet. And I hope that when it does, we can come back and have that conversation. But right now, I think for consistency's sake, for our parents, for our teachers, we, we've got to stay the course, and we've got to adhere to what we brought you originally as our best thinking around the metrics and the science of this. And it, it is aligned to the current thinking from all of the folks that we've talked about. So I just wanted to weigh in, and just thank you for giving me a second to do that. So, uh, I just wanted to weigh in and just thank you for giving me a second to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Manning and then Mrs. Hughes.
Uh, thank you for sharing that, Dr. Spence. And Ms. Melnick and Ms. Felton, thank you for respectfully disagreeing with me. You know, I, that means a lot. I mean, I, obviously I want you to support my motion. But I, I appreciate you valuing my, my viewpoint on that. Um, I did want to just address a couple of things. You know, Ms. Melnick, you've had a lot of people beg to stick with the plan, but I've had a lot of people beg to get our kids back to school. I think the last time I saw, just over the last couple of days, we've gotten about 150 emails, um, asking us to get the kids back to school. And I hear from teachers, you all may hear from teachers all the time who don't want to be in school. I hear from teachers all the time who tell me they're going to quit if they don't get back to school. So, so know that it's on the other side as well. I need to address something that Ms. Anderson said because it bothers me. You insinuated that I made this motion because I'm tired of the virus. You said because somebody, let me finish, please.
Allow Mrs. Manning.
You said because some, some, you're, you're making this motion because somebody is tired of the virus. And I can only assume that you are referring to me if you're not, you can correct me and tell me who you're referring to. And, you know, that it's like rolling a dice. And that is not the case at all. I, I don't, you said you don't want one person to die? I don't want one person to die either. But I look at it that people can die if we don't get our kids back into school. The anxiety and the depression are real. The ER doctors addressed that this evening. And so suicide is a real issue that I have great concern about. Addiction, overdoses, those are real, real issues. And so I don't want anyone to die either. And so I, I just didn't appreciate that comment and really needed to address it. Thank you.
Uh, Mrs. Hughes, Mrs. Riggs.
I do appreciate that we're, we're having this much discussion. And I do appreciate the comments that even though we may disagree on some points, everybody wants the best. We have an awful lot of competing interest. Education is really important. Being social is really important. Teachers are really important. Parents being able to work is really, all of those things are really important. And we all kind of come at this from different directions, as was pointed out, because of our experiences. So a few of the things that, that I think about, um, one of which is, you know, I think back to my graduation. And I, I know that everybody in every city now seems to kind of get herded through at these big conference centers. We actually graduated in our stadium. And I remember processing into the stadium with all of the other seniors thinking, this is the last time we're all going to be together again. And so, and our kids are missing that and that's something they're never going to get back. Most of you know, I lost my mother a little over a year ago. She was in a nursing home. And there was one lady, Ms. Lucy, that came in about the time she came in. Everybody that was there before them passed away. They were the last two there from before then. They were the only two that had regular visitors. And they continued to be much more physically healthy and alert than everyone else who was there. And so while we did have mental health issues before this, I do think these shutdowns are exacerbating it. I think we're finding some new ones because of the isolation, but I think things that were already existing are being exacerbated. Additionally, we're going to have children falling through the cracks. There is a reason that teachers are mandated reporters. So there are a lot of things that are not going to get noticed because these teachers who are mandated reporters, who are trained to look for signs of things, they're not going to be there to do it. And, you know, my last point with this is I, I'm really concerned that children are being raised to live in fear. Um, and I think about times that I was subbing and conversations that I've had since then. But, you know, I had parents tell me in October that their children were crying about SOLs because they're afraid of a test that's not even going to be administered for another six months. I remember when I was in schools and children talked a lot about shooter drills. You know what? That's a very real thing that could happen and you do need to be prepared, just like having fire drills. But the fact that they were so focused on it is another fear. And we had a parent send an email that when we talked about children potentially going back to school, her daughter was crying because she knew she went back to school, she was going to die. So there are things that are legitimate fears, but you mitigate things and you don't teach people to just completely, just, just give in to that fear all the time. I got cut out of a car once. The next day, my father showed up at my house. My car was, of course, they had to cut the roof off to get me out. I didn't have a car. He showed up at my house, tossed his car key at me and said, let's go. And I said, where are we going? He said, doesn't matter, but if you don't get back in that car today, you might be afraid to do it. So you need to get back in right now. So while we do need to mitigate risk, while we do need to understand that there are legitimate reasons to have a healthy respect for things around us that can hurt us, I just don't want to see children being taught to live in fear and being afraid to live their lives at all. And this is really, really concerning to me.
Mrs. Riggs and then Mrs. Weems.
Um, I just want to, to thank you, Vicki, um, because I have wrestled with this as well, believe it or not. I know with all of my comments tonight, you probably are questioning that. But it is something that, you know, I've thought about too, because I don't want anything anymore than putting our kids back in school. I truly feel it is, it is our job to make sure they're educated. And, but it's also our job to make sure that they're safe. I appreciate everybody's feelings. I like what you just said, Laura. I don't want our kids living in fear. I don't like living in fear. It's the last thing I want to do. And my father and my, my family would do the same thing to me if I had to be cut out of a car. And I would do the same thing. I did the same thing to my daughter when she was pulled off of a ski lift the first time she went skiing. And I went up, I happened to be the chef room there and I went to the, the infirmary they put her in and they didn't want her to go back on. I said, oh yes, she is, because she'll never ski again if she doesn't go back out. So I understand that, truly. I really do. It's been something that, uh, you know, I've talked to, uh, all of, many of my friends on the school board and said, I don't know what to do. This is, is very hard. And listen, and I know these parents think we're not listening to them, but I read every one of the emails, every one of them. And I read every one of the replies that our chair makes back to them because I, and then I read theirs again to make sure I know who she's replying to, because I think it's just so important. I know people think I'm a geek because I enjoy listening to these parents. It doesn't bother me to stay here late because I think it's so important to hear what they have to say. This is what we were elected for, I understand. But I also am concerned, and I don't want to be afraid either. And, and, you know, I do wear the mask, we do social distance. We're not going to do the family Christmas like we always do. And I have a 93-year-old mother that's, insists that she's going to go see everybody because she's not going to live in fear either. So I get it. But I still feel like we owe, um, everyone, you know, including our, our employees and our administrators, Dr. Spence, for making that decision and, and keeping our kids and keeping our schools closed for right now and supporting that. And when it's time for us to look at this again and they recommend what they feel is the best thing, looking at, you know, being advised by the health department and all of them, then I will follow them as well. But I, and I, I just want you to know that I have wrestled with this and I truly know that they are, they are reaching out to you, Vicki. I know they are. Because I, I guess they feel like you're the only one that's listening. And because you're responding to them, because you feel the way they do, and I do too. I don't respond because I just, I, I know that Carolyn responds for me. I want our families to know that I am not one that responds and it's not because I don't care. It's because most of the time that Carolyn is responding as our chair, I agree with what she is saying. And I, I talk to her frequently about her responses.
Ditto, that's fair for.
So I, I do want to say that because I keep hearing and we keep getting things of, you know, some people did respond, but most of you didn't. I just want people to know that's why I don't. So, um, if someone I know calls me, obviously I'm going to answer the phone. Call them back, that type of thing. But when I know it's going to the whole board, I'm not going to respond if Carolyn has done that because usually she has responded the way I'm feeling. So, but I do want to tell you I respect your positions, Carolyn Weems, Laura, you Vicki, and I thank you for, for, um, coming and sharing this and speaking for your constituents the way you have. So thank you.
Okay. And I just want to qualify, I appreciate the remarks, but I'm, just so the public's aware, the job of the chair in responding is to, to just state the facts. And I go out of my way and hopefully most of the time I've succeeded in, in not sharing personal opinions. And so in that regard, um, you know, i- if I've done that much, then thank you for the remarks. Okay, Mrs. Weems and then Ms. Owens.
Thank you. I appreciate Dr. Spence and Ms. Holtz, um, sharing a little bit about family members. And I think Ms. Owens has, has shared also. And I've got a nine-year-old that I facilitated virtual learning with all last spring and, and have done so for the last four or five weeks. And, um, her teachers are awesome. I mean, I, she comments on how great her three teachers are, she's got three, every day. And they are just rock stars. But Brylin's experience, she just wants to get back in the classroom so much. She does not do near as well virtually. But the point is, we've got four people here who could tell you four different stories about how their student, their children best learn. So that brings me back to the point of that's why choice is so important for families and parents. You know the people under your roof and how they best learn. And so I, um, I don't want the kids to get back in school just because I'm tired of the virus, although I'm very tired of the virus, you know? I want it to go away, but it's not going to. And I don't, again, it, it's, to bring up deaths, what are we going to do with, with one dies? You know, and then we can go the, you know, kids at home are depressed and anxious. We, you know, whatever we decide, it's not going to be perfect. So, but this is, was a fall plan and we stuck to it through the fall. Now it's winter and we do have a lot more information, not just from Dr. Fauci, whoever. I'm not a big fan of his, so, but I mean, anyway, but anyway, he did say, he did say what he said. But, um, we have it from many, many places about how it's so important to get these kids back in school. And we've heard it from many, many places, nationally, statewide and locally, the unintended consequences that this virus has had on kids staying at home and being isolated. And it's not, I'm not talking about Zoom issues. I mean, Brylin, my, my granddaughter doesn't like it, she's going to be fine. She just doesn't prefer and she learns better. But there is really significant challenges with mental health that goes way beyond that. And it has skyrocketed and you cannot just avoid that data or that science because it's true, it's real, it's there. So I think that it is fine to, to relook at the metrics, to look at so many different things, to look at school to school like Ms. Manning has in here, sort of like our sister, you know, City Chesapeake did. I support this plan for a various number of reasons, for the educational needs of our students, for the mental health of our students, for the social and emotional needs, for their physical safety, nutrition, violence, abuse, for the ability of them not to have to be on a screen for four, five, six, seven hours a day. I also support this because of the overwhelming, overwhelming desires of both our teachers, our families, our parents, our guardians and our students to be able to have a choice, knowing what's at stake, knowing the risk and being able to have a choice to go any building or to stay home. So I will support this, Ms. Manning.
Ms. Owens.
Thank you. I just want to start off by kind of echoing Ms. Weems' statement about whatever we decide, it will not be perfect. That's almost the understatement of the year for what we're dealing with today. It, it's not going to be perfect. It's not going to be anywhere near perfect. Some days I'm not sure that it's even good. And we have to work with what we, what we're able to work with. I do think that sticking to the plan is helpful, but I agree, uh, with Ms. Manning and with, I hope, most of my colleagues in saying that this should be put on the agenda anytime a member feels like we need to relook at the information that's come through to be updated, to be tweaked, to be discussed. That's the, the purpose of, of having board oversight is to be able to bring the discussions, have the debates, look at things differently and make sure that the, the plan and progress that we're making is the best, it's the most current and it's what's working best for our population as the situation continues to evolve. And so I, I supported having this on the, the agenda. I remember how difficult it was, um, when I wanted to discuss it again. And so I will continue to support, uh, colleagues who have a need for us to continue the, the conversation. We heard a lot and continue to hear a lot about the achievement gaps that exist and are widening. And I, I will say that the equity policy, uh, that we just put in place, uh, is a start. It wasn't fully supported by the board, but it is a start. And we hear, you know, about the, the CPS, the mental health, the suicide issues. And I'll say that I proposed an amendment to simply explore adding more virtual supports like having a suicide hotline and child help, child abuse help on Chromebooks, to have additional training to counseling staff on recognizing and assessing kids in a crisis. And that was voted down in a meeting. Uh, I want kids back in school as soon as it's safe, like we all do. But we know our students are going to be dealing with virtual on and off for some time. And even when we are fully face to face, we can still be in a place to have strengthened resources. So what I'm asking is that the board members, my colleagues, that we continue to bring that same energy about fixing, uh, these issues and not just pointing them out, um, so that we can work towards some innovative solutions instead of just discussing them. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaking of, of bit to that, I, I meant to mention earlier, the Council of PTAs, and this is, this goes back to the summer, but they're at the point now of these, this portals being added to every PTA website. And it's, it's a, it is a tremendous source of resources for parents that this council has put together. And some of it might even direct them to some of the, some of your suggestions, but I do encourage you all to, to check that out on one of those sites. I do want to say for me, part, part of this has involved the option-one parents that are, are split because there were a number of option-one parents we've heard from and I've heard from many personally that, you know, they, they chose option-one based on this plan. And when it, when it got into the red, they would not have, it was their feeling that, you know, we did what we did because it was the plan and that was what they had signed up for. So, so, and I was thinking, well, if, if we, if we're losing half the, the option-one families, then it'll throw the whole scheduling into further turmoil. But I, I do want to recognize that, you know, my, my general neighborhood is, is very split. You know, the, the, the neighbors I live with, the friends I, I see on my walks. So we all see it in our, in our daily lives. And, um, and so I, I'm just glad that we can know that every position can be respected. But, but, you know, I, I, I made my comments earlier, so. so. Is there any, Mrs. Anderson?
Thank you. Mrs. Manning, I just wanted to say that a couple of the things that you have on your proposal, I feel that later would be very appropriate to bring forward at another time. I think now's not the time to change our, our metrics at this point, because as was just pointed out, what Mrs. Rogers just said is that there are some parents who chose Option One, decided that that's what they wanted to do, and they sort of expected us to go back to virtual. They, they've been, they knew that that was going to happen, that was part of the plan for fall. But some of the things that you have on here, like the part of, you know, some of these are, I think, we're going, are going to happen anyway if there's a COVID transmission within a particular school. I'm sure that school will be, you know, closed temporarily. We've already, we've already had a couple classrooms that we've had to put on, where we monitored the students for 14 days at one point. I think it's, the metrics have changed, and this whole thing has changed as we've gone along quite a bit. The information that we're getting from our health professionals is, you know, things have changed since, since we, this whole thing started. So, but I just wanted to say that, you know, you may not have approved of the analogy that I used, but my point I was trying to make was that you're taking, we're taking a chance, taking a chance if we put students back in school right now when, when the numbers are in the red. And with, we don't have the numbers yet from Thanksgiving. I mean, it's only, this coming week coming up is when we're going to start hearing about the transmissions that have happened from Thanksgiving. And then, before you know it, Christmas is going to be upon us, and people are going to be traveling again and having gatherings. So, I don't think that now is the time to change our metrics. I think we need to be living with, with the way we have voted on in this plan that, that we have been going with. I think maybe in January, after, we've had a couple of weeks after Christmas where things kind of settle down and people are not traveling as much, at that point in time, we might take a better look at it and say, you know, well, maybe now's the time to change our metrics and, and look at it and see. I just don't think now's the time to do that.
Okay. Are we ready to, for a vote? Would you like to reread your motion, please?
Sure. I move that the Virginia Beach School Board adjusts the fall reopening plan as follows. One, remove the current metrics that determine school openings and closures. Two, return all Option One students back to school starting on December 7th as they were on November 12th. Three, monitor individual schools, and if an outbreak occurs of COVID transmission within a school, then the superintendent, in consultation with Mary Shaw and the Virginia Beach Department of Health, may make a decision to close an individual school. Four, if COVID transmission within Virginia Beach schools becomes a concern, the superintendent can request an emergency meeting of the school board to discuss, and the board can determine how to move forward.
Okay. With that, all in favor, please raise your hand. Chairwoman Ryan, in favor, we have Ms. Manning, Ms. Hughes, and Ms. Weems. All opposed, kindly raise your hand.
Chairwoman, those opposed is Ms. Owens, Ms. Felton, Ms. Riggs, Ms. Melnick, Chairwoman Ryan, Mr. Edwards, Ms. Anderson, and Ms. Hughes, and Ms. Holtz. So, we have three yes and eight no.
Okay, the motion does not pass.